Hey, welcome everybody. This is the Merrimack Villas District Board of Commissioners meeting on Monday, October 18th. And I'll call the meeting to order at 5:03 PM. Public participation will be offered in person and by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to the MVDwater.org website and opening up and downloading today's meeting agenda. There's a link on there that you can click on and get into the webinar, or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter the meeting webinar ID As a courtesy, Merrimack TV is also recording this meeting and will be posted on their website and most likely Channel 20, cable Channel 20 at a later date. So I'd like to have the board and everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation, on a nation, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, so before we get started, we'll just go through a roll call of board members so we can understand where they're calling from in John's case. So John, why don't you start?
John Lyons, 25 Windsor Drive.
Great, and we have on my left.
Paul McGlaughlin.
Will Funshun.
Ken Ayers.
And myself, Don Preventure. So we've got four in the room here at MVD. So we have more than the quorum present here. So we can begin with the Finance and Human Resources Review with Michelle Hope. Thanks, Michelle.
Just to make a note on the reports that we're reviewing. They are in development, so there are some changes that are going to be coming over the next couple of months. So I'm still going to focus us on where we are to total budget because there's some allocation of both revenue and expenses that needs to be adjusted. If you ask me any questions on any of the aspects of where things stand. But being 25% through the fiscal year, the end of September, our current year revenues came in at 30.78% of the overall budget and expenses at 22.95% of budget. It resulted in a net ordinary income of $350,000 as compared to last year being a little bit over $259,000. So looking at the first report, which has the income budget versus actual year-to-date in total. One item that was noted last month that there was a question on the account 40407, having $7,000 versus the budget, which has since been revised because we added on the O and M into the miscellaneous income. But the normal budget for straight miscellaneous income is $5,000. So we do have the $7,000 that's made up of FSA forfeiture and also a workers' comp premium holiday from Primex. So those are the two key pieces there. The remaining in the budget now is our annual O and M of the 106,000.9 that we're receiving from St. Cobain. I will do a breakout that listed as miscellaneous income settlement proceeds just so that it makes it clearer and the distinction between the two.
Was that layout changed? It looks different.
The income, the first page, the income piece, this was added on this month.
Right.
Yeah, this wasn't included last month. And then the second page should still be familiar to last month's. We added in the total budget, as I said, so we can still reference on that. But we're meeting tomorrow to go over the allocations for budget, so we should have that done for next month and we'll bring the two reports all into one.
I had a question on that. The budget year-to-date column is just the proportion of the annual budget, right?
Yes, but the way various accounts were allocated was just straight line. We want to look at the seasonality of our revenues and also just some of the expenses, things like R and M for motor vehicles. The registrations all happen in the beginning of the year. So we just want to move some things where we have some knowledge. Some are very specific, such as the debts. Those we know exactly when we'll be making payments there, so we should be able to line those up. And others, we'll just go based off history, just with the history being off a little bit the last couple of years for various reasons with COVID, et cetera. We wanted to just go back a little bit further and then do the distribution, you know, based on what we're seeing as a longer stretch of time. So you'll see those changes next month.
Okay.
So moving on to expenses. I know that overtime was mentioned last month and that's part of it also. The allocation right now was a straight line, particularly for admin because we have been running everything through Ron for our approvals for overtime. And at this point in the year, we've already gone through the billing for all that we did because of the rate change. We've also had various issues with COVID that can throw things off when we have staff out, another half staff have to pick things up in-house. We also are moving forward with the CUSI upgrade. So that implementation is already signed off on and moving forward. And as part of that, we did a switch to a new IT management company. So we've already been doing that whole piece there. The next few months, we wouldn't anticipate anything other than nominal overtime. And then once we get into January through March, then we're going to see another larger swing of admin overtime. But then same thing, the end of the year, April through June usually isn't too bad. We're leaving April a little open because our first month of truly running on the new utility billing system will be March. We'll be working on it January through March, but I'll go smoothly. We should, you know, just wrapping that up and not expect too much overtime. But as we said, there's just some unknowns there.
The reason why I brought it up is because we added staff, right? With the intention of reducing overtime. And from firsthand experience, it's just not uncommon for organizations to just keep going at the same pace. Doesn't mean that people aren't productive, right? They may do additional new things that have been going by the wayside in the past, right?
Most definitely, like to share with our audit, as part of audit, we did a cleanup on fixed assets that went back researching decades to try and make sure we have things properly identified, move some things off that didn't need to be there. We have a long, a long list of projects that we just try to chip away at. But our overtime has about a third, close to a third of what it was in 17.
Right.
So it's been coming down. And this year, the implementation, there's the implementation plus we brought on Dave from Distribution, he's now part of that. So yeah, it's in there. So we did stay at the same total as last year, but there were various different factors that brought us there.
It's just important to be able to explain it.
Sure, no, absolutely.
So I just noticed, this is July and August. Did you say that September's not included because still things moving around or something?
Nope, this is including everything. The title must not have been updated. So this is through September. And you'll see that in the reports following.
Okay. I had a question on the purchase of water. I know the $22,000. What was that for? I think I might have asked this before, but I can't remember.
And I, so at the beginning of the season, opened up the Panachuk, doing a well seven cleaning, memory surgery, right? And then there's a couple of different, right on Memorial Day. It was a short period of time and then once we get things up, our wells back up.
But isn't this just July and August?
July, August and September. But those charges were July and August.
Oh, so those, that, that bill ended up in this year's?
I believe so.
There were two, there were two bills.
Something carried in.
Yeah, and I thought that we went into July. It's a bit quaters.
We may have, I'd ask.
Yeah.
But it was, it made. I think Memorial Day was the first surge and then we had, again, I think it was memory surgery, right? We were, it was in July that we had the cleaning on seven.
And didn't we have, no, four was a while back. We did the new well.
And then I don't believe, but I'd have to look back. It would be needed to open up when we're replacing the pump at two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I.
I can put those two in.
Oh, yeah, that's right. No, don't bother.
Those are the two, we had seven cleaned and I was saying Memorial Day. I think that was the first surge we had. We were starting to notice things climb.
I was thinking that this was billed in July, August, September. And I was wondering, because I know it's been a very rainy season, what are we purchasing water? But I forgot about that whole well to well pump.
We started off hot and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Dry, should we start off dry right now?
Yeah, and I see the budget year-to-date on that is 16,000 out of the annual 20,000. Is that six, how is that 16,000 calculated?
The total budget is $20,000. That was part of.
Right.
People taking a stab at allocating the budget.
So what's the 16,000?
We usually do see, we usually do see the usage for water in the summer months.
Right.
So that was the logic behind putting the 16 there, but then also allowing for perhaps next May and June, we may have had additional use.
All right, so you're not, so this budget year-to-date is not just a proportion of one month through the 12, it's 1/12 of the year or 2/12.
Some are, and then some are, some were allocated, but we're going to, as I said, we're going to relook at both revenue and expenses. And perhaps we can actually add something to just kind of let you know what the basis, if they're just pure the 1/12.
Right.
Or what the basis was, just seasonal, that type.
Right, right.
Yeah, we can add that up when the reasons follow.
All right, that's helpful because I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Where those numbers are coming from.
And just to clarify, I do see the, you know, the same run rate for the, for the current budget. So it's really only the header that's wrong.
Yes.
So just to clarify that.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's like, you know, for the commissioners, $1,000 last month and $1,500 this month, five commissioners, hundred bucks.
Yep.
So I want, that makes sense. So the numbers seem to be correct. But that raises a different question though. Is this not a report that comes out of our ERP system?
This is, this current report is coming, is coming out of QuickBooks, going into Excel. So that's part of the issues that we have there.
So you have to fudge like the headers and stuff like that?
Yes, we do have customization in QuickBooks. It's just, it's much more time consuming. So we just hadn't got there, so Kristen pulled, pulled this so we could start to see, you know, some of the year-to-date. But ideally, I would like everything coming out of the QuickBooks reporter.
Okay, okay, thanks.
And otherwise, on that same page, we're looking at 60300, the purchase of water. Around there, we have, just above it, 60200 and 6505, uniforms and then education. They are both pushing mid 30s of the year-to-date budget. But part of that is the uniform funds are loaded at the beginning of the year. So we just have a lot of folks, we have some new folks getting their uniforms and some others just refreshing what they had. And seminars too is something that, the timing on that is not set just when folks are seeing the seminars and training that they want. They'll be signing, it's a renewal year, so that they need to get all their CVs in by December 31st. They've been going gangbusters on registering for classes. Yeah, and then the, there is some licensing, just a few hundred dollars that is in education that needs to be pushed down to the licensing. And as we've said before, 60500 for the motor vehicle maintenance. We're always going to see a good chunk of things in the first quarter of the year because that's when we do the truck registrations. That's necessary. Any other questions on that page?
Another picture.
And then next page, few items to note that are over 25% of the budget. 70750, R and M for watershed. We did have a blockage that we had to take care of at the watershed. And plus, we are also looking at replacing the padlocks. So there's a project going on doing that. Postage, beta 100, we had the three billing cycles all processed in July for the year end. Fees miscellaneous is also tied into the year-end billing for all because all those checks come in that we're processing, we get hit with the fees. So versus, we do have an earnings credit that offsets things, but the volume was so large that we did end up with a net fee for both July and August. But now, now that's passed it back to, back to normal. And 81400, public education. We did the lead and copper sampling, so we have the information various parts of the packet that went out under public education. And any questions on, any particular items on that page?
Yeah, I have a question on 81900, the engineering. It looks like there's a, we're under. And again, I don't know if that's because the budget is not loaded the way we expect the billing to come in or something, or I didn't know. It just seemed like it was.
Well, we're at the total engineering.
Yeah, it's 9200.
$9200. The budget year-to-date, as I said, we're looking at how that number was determined, but the total for the year is the 138.5, 138,000.5. So it looks like it's close to just kind of spreading it.
And now, what does that engineering line item include? Is it all of the stuff Underwood's doing and Emery and Garrett and all that too, or?
It is, yeah, a lot of it is. I'd have to, I don't have that.
It seems lower is why they, the 9200, I would have thought would be higher in three months.
Anything right now that's for New Well is hitting the CIP for New Well for now. So those costs for EGGI are being paid over the New Well bond money and then also going to the balance sheet versus hitting, versus hitting an expense.
Okay, that helps.
And then, I mean, anything related to a project is also going to the end of the project. So I don't know if this is, we can look over the invoices. This would just be the general monitoring, that type of thing.
Okay.
Can make sure that that does make sense.
90204, I fail to recognize the 420% of the percent of total budget.
There is a formula error there.
Right.
So actually, that obviously should be 0%. That is the Turkey Hill, the Turkey Hill principal and below at 90304 says DES, DW, GT loan interest, the 34,004, that's also Turkey Hill. And our first payment will be in January. We just did our final billing in September to wrap things up there. And so since substantial completion was last January, our first payment will come on.
Okay.
This January, and these were actually estimates in the budget. They're, now that they've got the final tally, they're going to be giving us a payment schedule.
So the budget year-to-date, is that just a 12th of the total budget?
Budget year-to-date on both of those.
How is that column calculated? That's new, right? I'm not, I don't recall that in prior months.
You know, it's probably tough to know which ones are proportioned and which ones are.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking because.
Yeah, right now.
It says 0%, but we also have, we know we have a budget for it, right? So.
No, the budget is, the total budget for it is 48,790. So actuals have been zero. There is, there's an issue in the budget year-to-date column that it's still saying, that it's saying zero.
Right, but it also says percent of total budget, 420% of the very.
That was a formula error.
Right.
Yep, that was, so that should be zero. And then below 490300, debt service, bond interest. That didn't have a formula there and that should be 48.3%.
But how, how is the column budget year-to-date calculated?
That's what I think, there's an error there because it's saying zero.
Okay. But that doesn't, that doesn't answer my question. How is it calculated? Is it a 12th of the total budget or?
No, this one's.
Times number of months we had so far.
Principal and interest, actually, those we would actually, we will be able to go by the amortization schedule.
Okay.
And putting those in exactly on the months.
So we're going by the, by the actual budget proposal by month?
Yes.
Or approved budget election?
Yes, and we'll be in for the debt schedules. We actually have exactly when they're due, when we pay, right on when things are due. So that's when those, those are going to go in. But there's, there's an error in the formula here.
Yeah, understood, okay.
On engineer, one of the projects that comes to mind is the cost of service study that we've authorized to go forward without, it was budgeted 40 grand and that's something that we haven't been built for yet.
Yeah, so.
I want to actually too, we had been looking at the asset management program to be part of the projects, 2, 3, 7 and 8. And then we changed and are going to bring that into budget because we need to be matching. And if it's going to be part of the projects, that 100,000 would actually be coming from money that's coming from DES because we have the two loans and the grant. So we can't be matching with those type of funds. So we're going to pull that into budget and that will be 10,000 or so, I want to say, is getting pulled out of this week's. I just got the requisition from Underwood today to review. So I'd say it's around 10,000. That's going to be engineering expense that will come on in October. And actually, we'll back to your question there where the loan and interest, where those are put at zero for year-to-date and their first payments aren't due until January, I would assume that the full budget is put in on the month that they're to be paid. I just can't verify it from this.
That's fine, thank you.
Any other questions on the expense? Any questions on previous year? Revenues is difficult to do a lot of comparison to because of all the variables that we've had, had going on. But things are, the actuals for this year '22, starting to get back to more of the work for us. And overall, as is the net ordinary income, we were $91,000 ahead of where we were last year. This is where we stand now. Any questions on the previous year comparison or the month-by-month for the first quarter?
Good, anybody? All right.
And on bank balances. Actually, I have a few, a few notes to me. The Kinsman Corporation escrow account has been set up. We're just waiting for it to be attached to our online treasury and I'll have the first escrow transfer or retainage on their first application transferred over and that should happen this week. And that's a little over 54,000. The operating account last, last month, August 31st, of the 1.717 million. If you were to compare to the reports you got last month, you would see 1.734 because there was an issue with, we had the 91 payroll hit 831 and the way it was initially reconciled in QuickBooks, it allowed it to reconcile, but it didn't make the adjustment to the cash. It wasn't making the adjustment to the cash on the trial balance with the way it was done. So we've since corrected it, but if you look back at August 31st, bank balance from last month, you're going to see it's a little over $17,000 higher. But this is the correct reconciled balance. And one other thing to note is looking at September 30th for account 10102, which is Wells 4 and 5 treatment plant funding, went from $2,000 to $922,000 and that was the capital reserve fund. So we did receive all of those reimbursements. So in the next month, so we'll, we'll be reconciling that up. There's some money that needs to, needs to go back to the operating account both for prior expenses that were reimbursed to us that we went in there to give us some cash flow when we started, as well as some funds that were transferred to be able to cover contractor payments until the disbursement requests came in from the various sources. So we'll be reconciling that down. And that does include the 1069, which we received for FY '21, O and M. And I was going to be discussing with the auditors at this point, we only have about $25,000 or so in Underwood invoices. And then we'll be, we'll be done with the bill on the project. So and something too that we can all discuss it. If things are done, done there, we can have, the O and M can come into the operating account going forward, once we reconcile this account and this kind of, to be close. So that's what we're going to be looking at, looking at this month. And then we'll also, since it's been up now, it'll be a year since substantial completion.
We just did a walkthrough, yeah.
Okay, I was going to say, so we'll have a Penta for drainage payment to issue also.
What amount is that? What amount is that ballpark, that retainage?
I mean, I know it's under 100,000 because the escrow account is 100, but that's a combination of 4 and 5 and Turkey Hill.
And there's no warranty issues or anything, any punchless items?
We, there was a couple punchless things, nothing, nothing major.
But a year later.
Yeah, no, that's where we did the walkthrough and we're going to notify Penta those take care, or Lisa noted it and take care of it for, for at least.
Yes, I haven't received any request from them yet. We just had a declare on the timeframe that we'll be getting the year.
We shouldn't pay it either until they're taken care of, right?
Absolutely.
No, and definitely we go to Ron on, on our drainage always to make sure that there's no outstanding items.
It'll be, he'll come through as a pay rec through Underwood. It's like we normally have, that gets signed off. I sign on off on that, they get paid anyway.
Any other questions?
Good, everybody okay? Great.
Thank you.
All right, great. So we'll move on to our regular session. And the first thing on here is Jamie Emery from Emery and Garrett Groundwater. And he's going to talk about several of, several items, basically. Jamie, how you doing?
Good, good evening, how's everybody?
Good.
Awesome. Well, I'm going to go down the list and start with MBD9. That was the first on the agenda. We have completed the pumping test, as you know. We finished, we pumped it for days at 1,000 gallons a minute. And this kind of a brief summary of this is that we, over that six-day period, we experienced 7.15 feet of drawdown, which is pretty remarkably minimal. The top of the screen of that well is set at 87 feet. So even after the pumping test, we still retained about 40 feet of available drawdown. We had about 1.8 feet of interference with well MBD2 during that pumping test period. We didn't see stabilization, but to be honest with you, we didn't expect. Uh, we didn't see stabilization, but to be honest with you, we didn't expect stabilization to occur. Uh, that's not uncommon in a, in an environment like that. We pumped, you know, during that time period. The uh, well, M B D two pumped continuously, so we had a simultaneous uh, test. Uh, and then we had periodic turn ons and shutdowns to evaluate the overall impact. Uh, I think at the end of the day. You know, we don't have the final water chemistry back, but the iron is extremely low. Our last iron sample after the third day of pumping was at point zero six six milligrams per liter. Magnes was at point zero zero five three, so very, very low. Chloride was at uh, seventy milligrams per liter. Uh, sodium is at forty five. Uh, the thing that probably, there was no nitrate, uh, which is good. I mean, there's no essence of fertilizer, you know, any kind of. Cultural impact that we would normally might be concerned about. Um. But PFOA did rise slightly. Uh, after the first day of pumping, we had twenty three. P P T of PFOA after the third day, we're at thirty point eight. Now it's possible that the last day of pumping that we took, we'll see that. Um, the people levels came down or stabilized or, but there's not enough information clearly, you know, the water needs to be treated, so. That was no surprise. Um. But overall, I think the favorability of the well is uh, in this, you know, I think. Our target goal for the treatment plan of two thousand gallons per minute is, is still reasonable. Um, Peter uh, Underwood asked me today as to whether or not I thought we should move forward with the treatment plant for well mine. You know, we're at a point where, you know, we had initially tried to start this pump test, you know, at the. Early part of July, we didn't get to the point of pumping this until the middle of September, because it continued to rain, rain and rain and rain. Uh, there is, you know, we wouldn't get final approval for this well probably until March or April of next year. Um, assuming everything went well. Uh, so now it's going to become a, a judgment decision. We have, we're still collecting recovery data. And we still don't have the final water chemistry data. But if you ask me tonight. Uh, do you think it's worthwhile proceeding with the treatment plant for well nine? I would say yes. Uh, if you are willing to wait another month into our next commission meeting to get a maybe more formal. Opinion on that, Ken, uh, but um. I think the information is. Reasonably sufficient. Uh, we might not get a thousand gallons a minute. Twenty four hours a day, three hundred and sixty five days a year. In fact, I'm sure we won't, but. Uh, there'll be some portion of that that I'm quite confident that we will. And I think it would be sufficiently. Would be sufficient justification to, to, you know, to proceed.
Jamie, what, what uh, makes you think we wouldn't get the full thousand gallons per minute?
Well, I think one of the issues is the impacts to um. The wetlands, for instance, and so if I was able to. Share my screen with you, I don't know if I can, um, is that a lot, is, can you let me share the screen, see? Share screen.
Your panelists.
Host disabled participant screen sharing. Can you, can, can you let me in?
Yep, you're outside.
Okay. So let's just see this for a second. So for instance. Can you see the screen here that shows um, P nine dash four?
Yes.
Okay. So during the pump test, this is a pizometer in the wetland, uh, in the, in the. Hardwood wetlands. And you can see that there's, you know, there's rises and falls as, as Natick Brook. Uh, comes with flow. I mean, I think some of these are going to be related to the Greens Pond releases. But you could see that there's, you know, when we pumped the well, we, we saw a drawdown in the pizometer in the wetland. Now, I think I have to stop sharing and I'll bring up another one. Um, hang on a second. For some reason, it doesn't make it easy to find you. Hang on. Why is that not, uh? Not letting me come down to that. Oh, here we go. Stop, share. There you go. Um. If I look at another plot now, you saw that one in your, if you continue to keep that in your brain. Uh, I'm going to take the same plot. Can you see this plot? It says nine four.
Yep.
And it's a longer scale. Um, hang on a second. It's a longer scale time period, so it starts in April. Does you see that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we extended that timeframe and you can see that. In July, end of June, uh, the water levels were at eleven feet in, in, in that pizometer. Before we even did the pump test. So even though we had an impact during the pump test, we know that even before the pump test happened. Water levels dropped down to the depth, almost to the depth of the bottom of that pizometer. So we're going to be in a position, we're going to have to demonstrate to the state that even though we had. An impact or in pumping, we know that. The pumping, and it's kind of nice that we had this much data, although it's. It, you know, we're way over budget on our end here. Uh, to be able to demonstrate to them that, to the state that, look, this is a small, recent time compared to what else we see. In the world of this um, local hydrogeologic setting. So only setting that, showing you that just so that you can get a sense of the complexities we're going to have to deal with as we go through the interpretation. Uh, but I think that we have enough information that we will be able to. Um, walk through this in a way that's reasonable and that would. Provide us with a certain amount of capacity. Uh, so. It is, it is somewhat of a risk. Um, there's no question. Um, we never can predict necessarily how. Uh, the state would interpret that, but I think we have enough information to make a very, very strong case for us, so.
Okay.
You know, we knew we're going into this with the, with the difficulty of, you know, having to make that decision. But I, I do believe, I don't think that this, that the well or the act could sustain twenty five hundred gallons a minute or three thousand gallons a minute. I think we'll be close to that sustainable capacity at two thousand. But. Uh, I, I'm encouraged by the performance of the well. With only seven feet of drawdown, with only one point eight feet of interference with the existing well, even though there was only six days of pumping. Uh, and with the low iron and manganese and low chloride levels, I think, you know, those parts of it were favorable, the PFOA. And the PFAS issues. Um, they're going to have to be, we're going to have to do some kind of um. Assessment as to where this is all coming from. Um, and I'm not sure that we all know the. Entire um. Entire source of all the PFAS is there, but. Anybody have any questions on M B D nine?
No, when do you anticipate um, having a report into the state?
Uh, my hope would be by the, you know, we're still collecting data, so my hope would be by the end of the year. Uh, that would be kind of the best is going to be a monster document.
Yeah.
So. End of the year, beginning of the fall, you know, beginning of two thousand twenty two. And then we've got some little in the state is very shorthanded and. From what I gather, they just hired a new hydrogeologist to be reviewing this document. This might be one of his first, so I'm not sure how that. Will fly, but um. But yeah, I think that's probably a reasonable time period. It's going to take us at least. Eight to ten weeks to pull this together. There's a lot of data here.
Ron, do you remember the ti, is it the end of the year that we have to um, agree for the contractor to put the? The pipe in connection to well nine? And that, I think.
It's, it's later on. I want to say this next year. I just don't know the exact date, but I believe we, it, it'll fit into the time.
Yeah.
Timetable, yeah.
And, and I think we'd still want them to proceed with that because everything still obviously sounds like there's definitely some. High favorability of the well and I.
Oh, absolutely. I, I think we, yeah, e- even if we're going to get something out of it, so I would. Yeah, I mean, when it comes time to put the water main in the ground and all of that, so.
Right, okay.
As far as treatment goes, that's. That shouldn't matter because it's the, the plant's being designed.
Yeah, right.
For the two thousand gallons a minute.
Right.
Because of what we can get out of two.
Right.
Per minute flow, so.
And Jamie, I don't know if you're aware, but ironically, well two exhibited elevated PFOA. In August and September. Of like twenty five and twenty one. And I think those are the two highest numbers ever recorded there.
Yes.
Something that's going on out there and I don't know what, what's going on with, but.
My, my thought was. In it just to, just to kind of thought, all the rain we had, I'm wondering if that has something to do with it.
I know, and on one hand you think it would dilute it, but on the other hand, it, I don't know if it's mobilizing something more, maybe. If it's aerial deposition in the soil and it's just pushing, pushing it through the soil faster, maybe, you know?
That could, it's, has, has a chance to dry out.
That would be my, uh.
Yeah, I'm getting.
But anyways, it's just.
Well, let me share my screen one more time and I'll show you the plot for. Um, can you see my screen?
Yes.
So this is the PFOA PFAS for M B D two. And you can see, this is the one that uh, we've been producing for the commissioners. Um, you can see that in two thousand nineteen with PFOA. Uh, you know, we had uh, twenty five or so level and it came up and then came back down. I have not, but I think that's a good point that we should look at. It, I did not relate this to rainfall or any kind of climatological event. But you can see here that, you know, this is, was in. July, August timeframe, like you said. And um, we, you know, we had these peaks again, so I um. I think it's probably worthy, uh, and that's a, it's a worthy point of view. I'll go take a look and see if that can be related to precip. So I just wanted to share that with you while I could.
But, so that graph goes through August? July and August, you said?
Yeah, yes, uh-huh.
Think we might want to get those updated on our website.
Okay.
I don't think they were quite updated that far. I, that's one of the questions I had written down to ask you. When, when the next update to those graphs is going to be, but looks like you already have it in August.
And I'm not sure that I've said that to you guys. Um, so that, I mean, I think we did, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So let me, let me make sure that gets sent to you with the dates, the last dates on it, okay?
Sure, yeah, thanks.
Yep. Um. So I, I'm encouraged. Uh, there's nothing that I am discouraged about except for the PFOA. But that's something obviously we're preparing for. The wetlands are going to be a challenge and we knew that going into it and the weather did not cooperate with us, so. I think the one good thing is there's a virtual pool on the backside. That does not look like we had any impact on the virtual pool, but again, we're still collecting the data on it, so.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, do you ever correlate the water levels in the wetlands with precipitation and see if there's a pattern there as well? Cause maybe some of that drawdown could be attributed to lack of precipitation, maybe if. If that's, if that's the same as what you're seeing in the baseline pre-pumping data?
Yeah, I, I mean, yes, there, there's no question that the precipitation has an impact on those. Uh, pizometers in those wetlands and clearly when Greens Pond is released. That it also has an opposite impact. It rise, causes the water levels in the pizometers to rise, so. Um, so it, it's both, you know, there's no question that surface water in the Natick Brook impacts the surf, the water levels in the pizometers. Now we're going to have to differentiate what is that impact from the pumping and that's, that's not going to be easy, but we'll, we're going to work on it.
I'll assume you'll make that argument in the report for D E S to also understand that, right?
Correct.
About the surface water levels in Greens Pond and. The, the outlet of Greens Pond is a. A horizontal orifice that is susceptible for clogging and. Depending on when it clogs and when someone cleans it out, you're going to have all kinds of peaks and valleys of. Flow in the brook and probably in the wetlands as well, right?
Right, a- and the fact that Natick Brook goes dry. And we knew that, that's why if you recall at one of the commissioner meetings last year, I had someone run out there and take pictures.
Oh, sure.
When the Natick Brook was dry, because at that point, that would have been a perfect time to run the test, but that point, everything was dry, right?
Right.
So we know that that happens naturally and naturally occurs, so. Um, we're going to have to, you know, and I'm going to have to make some tough. We're probably going to start pulling some of the equipment out because it's been in there forever. Um, but we're going to have to make some decisions in the next several weeks as to which ones we take out, which ones we keep monitoring and just continue. And I mentioned this in a previous board meeting, I'm probably going to come before you, I'm not going to, I'm going to. Ask for probably like some additional funds for the monitoring that we've been doing. Um, because it's been so much, but I'm, you know, it is going to be up to you as to whether or not. You're willing to accept that because I did give you a price. Um, and I did not put in any kind of provisions for this. Extensive amount of monitoring we've been doing. Um, but I'll see where we go with that. I haven't pulled it together yet, so.
And what's the value of continuing on the monitoring? Is that to correlate with precipitation better or something or um?
Well, yeah, to do correlations with the precipitation, I, if we take well two off, which is what is proposed, as I understand it. Everything's going to fill up. Right, because there's no withdrawals. Um. You know, that may or may not be to our favor. So uh, that's something I have to have a conversation internally with the guys here as to what the benefit and the, and the non benefit of doing that is, but right now. I'm leaning towards pulling all the equipment out in the next week or so.
Okay.
That's all I have for well nine. Um, if you'd like to go on to Mitchell Woods, it'd be.
I just asked one thing, Jamie, just, I'm not sure if I heard you right. Did you say that we weren't, couldn't be sure about the source of the PFOA there, well nine?
Yeah, I don't think that's been, um. That's been confirmed or determined exactly. You know, there hasn't really, to my knowledge, and we haven't really done a footprint on the PFOA PFAS there. And it's probably something that at some point in time, we're going to want to do. Is to start doing some radial plots on. Uh, the various components of the PFAS that we're seeing in these wells and compare it to some of the. Some of the potential sources. I know what I mean that saying, well, one, you might start with P, you know, Saint Obane and look at their. Footprint on the PFAS. I mean. You can do radial plots that would show, you know, the levels, the, the relationship or the ratio of PFOA to PFAS to PF. Um, you know, to the other, to the other sixteen parameters or fifteen that we're monitoring. And compare that to what we see. Um, at Saint Obane or what we see in other kinds of activities that produce products like. Triple A foam or, you know, um. Weatherproofing products or something of that nature. But that's a whole investigation in and of itself.
Okay, I just didn't know if there's anything known.
Good.
Other than Saint Obane that's anywhere near there.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Okay.
Hey, anybody else?
Any other questions on well nine?
No, no.
All right.
So in Mitchell Woods, um. Mitchell Woods is, if you recall, uh, was permitted in March fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen. There's never been any PFAS detected in that well site, which is why, one of the reasons why it's, um.
I don't think that's true.
Uh, no, I have the data. No, we haven't seen PFAS detected in the production well. I, I pulled that up today. I'll, I can go back and present it to you, but um. That's, that's the data that I, we went out and sampled that specifically. I can grab it. We don't have, uh. We don't have uh. Anything, we we not seen one for nitrates or VOCs, uh, they've all been below laboratory detection limits. The well is permitted for four hundred and thirty-two thousand gallons over a twenty-four hour period, so. Um, that's a, it's equivalent to three hundred gallons a minute. But it is, it is limited for an annual withdrawal of forty-five million gallons a day. Which is uh, which will allow you to use it during peak demands in the summertime. Or if you chose not to do it in peak demands and did it something else, but that would give you the flexibility to do that. Uh, it is on the Babusik um, Brook watershed, which is separate from what we've been dealing with. And in the other wells. And the permit expires on March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Now, they require it to be submitted supposedly three to four months in advance. So they can review it and make comments and do so, we're not gonna make that, but. Uh, the proposal I've submitted to you uh, goes through the re-permitting process. And I put in a little contingency in case there are certain things the state asks for to bring up again. That we we might not expect. But it does require us to go and do a um, well sighting review, an update of the contaminant threat survey. An update of the wellhead protection program and then do a full-scale. Uh, pumping test and water quality analysis. And that has to be done every five years if you're not using the well. If the well goes online in the interim, then that permit gets extended to ten years. So we're really uh, something we really need to to start on pretty soon. Uh, to get to the point where we can get it into the state for review and approval by March twenty-second. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, but um.
Does anybody have any questions on this um? So that total, to renew that permit with a pump test and. Water quality sampling, report, the whole nine yards is uh, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Correct.
That's something we should probably approve now so that you can get started, right?
Yeah, I really need to get it approved so we can get that moving forward. And twenty-five hundred is a contingency, which if we, I wouldn't use unless we needed it and then I'd come before Ron. Uh, or the board and say, yeah, we needed that because the state asked for something additional to what we expected, so. But I think it'd be, if you could approve forty-two five, then we wouldn't have to come back for um, the additional contingency. And I I I didn't, I'm, that's a guess on my part on the contingency.
I'm just saying, sooner or later, we have to make a decision if we pursue Mitchell Woods or not.
Yeah.
Because we keep, you know, I mean, these are maintenance costs right now, that really don't add any value at all, right? That's actually water done. The only thing we're doing is we're holding the door open. It's a lot of money to hold the door. And Mitchell Woods, we know from a cost per gallon standpoint, is very, very expensive. Now, it's fair to clean water, right? But we also had a sense of some PFAS in it anyway, right?
I thought there was a report that you did a pump test.
I really.
Something a while ago and there was some low, single-digit. PFOA or something.
I never recalled any PFAS being in that well.
No.
I swear to God.
Yeah, I do too.
That was done not wrong.
I remember that as well.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's where I'm, you know, I mean, at one point, we need to either stop the bleeding and write it off, right? And then either re-permit it in ten years or fifteen years when that might come back up.
Didn't you just pump that like a, like a year or two ago?
We did because, not for a long time, we did because you wanted a PFAS sample. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so that means we took one.
You did, and it came up with no uh. Yeah.
When you say, you say, you're saying non-detectable.
Yeah, let me, I'm trying to find the results. I thought I had them here, but I don't seem to find them here.
You know, I'm I'm almost positive. I remember that. Unless that was mistaken.
It wasn't high.
No, it was, I remember it was low.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think you had it at all. Let me just see if I can, while we're talking, let's see if I can get.
Because this, this would be a good opportunity in the forty-eight hour test to see what the water quality is.
Oh, we will definitely, we will be taking uh, about seven thousand or six thousand dollars worth of water chemistry data on that one. Um, to demonstrate, I mean, my two cents on it, not that I need the work, but my two cents on this is as follows. You're, there are so few sites in anywhere that have no PFAS that. It's a rarity. Number two, it's a property you've already negotiated and you have, which is a rarity. And number three, it has a large groundwater withdrawal permit that is very rigorous and very challenging to get. And for you to kick the can down for five more years, in my view, is really cheap money. For the opportunity to have that available should. For, you know, everything that could go wrong would be possibly, you know. We don't get the permitted capacity at well nine that we want. Um, which is a possibility. I mean, it's, it's, I think it's remote, but I think it's a possibility. And I, I just, in my. In my world, for municipalities to have a four hundred and thirty thousand gallon a day supply that has great water chemistry. Yes, it might be difficult to tie it in at the moment. Most of our clients would kill to have it.
So I'm more saying, I'm more saying, if we really.
Right.
We should just then, you know, bite the bullet and say, we're gonna put a warrant out, go out there, we're gonna build that well out and have it. I just hate spending, you know, fifty thousand dollars a year, which I think ballpark we probably have in the last couple of years. But, you know, between twenty and fifty thousand.
That's correct. Look, it seems like it's been a little, little while.
There's a wetland plot out there that needs to be monitored every year. These these little ancillary costs.
Yeah, it just stacks up, right? I'd rather want to get use out of it than at least.
Right.
So, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I liked it, the only re- re- reservation was that I had thought. Some testing that was done in the past identified, and it was definitely way below the MCL, but it was still detectable. And we were wrestling with, if the rest of our treatment plants, if we're treating to non-detect. On everything else, but this well has some low-level detection. Then we wanna, you know, how does that jive with the rest of our non-detect water? So it would really help me to get to the bottom of what really, what is PFAS in the, in that well or not? And I, for some reason, I um, I definitely remember talking about that there was some low level in there, but um.
So I had my, my guys, and this is the, and I don't have the raw data in front of me, but I I asked the question to Ryan, who does the sampling. And generates those plots for you. I said, what was the past PFAS reading at Mitchell Woods? And he said, no PFAS was detected in the Mitchell Woods production well. And then the next question I had is, are there any water quality issues? He said, just so you know, um, since the earliest sampling was performed in two thousand eight, the groundwater quality of Mitchell Woods has remained excellent. No PFAS has ever been detected. That was his comment. So I will, I, but I can't sit here and confirm that.
Right.
My employee is correct one hundred percent on that. Um, so I will, um, but I did ask him to look that up today. So I will, um. I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that he's, when, you know, that's my, my recollection that we didn't see anything, but if you have a different recollection. I'll go and take a look uh, and confirm that. And if you want, you could, you could approve it with a condition of, you know, water chemistry or something to that end. I do know that I'll, if I, I, you know, if we wait a month, it's gonna be even more challenging to get this in, but uh, and and that's up to you, certainly.
Jamie, just for the benefit of the rookies in the room, um, letting this go and then starting over would be a far more. Expensive challenge, I guess.
If we had to go through, yeah, so the city of Dover had uh, let one of theirs go. The cost, the difference in cost for developing a groundwater. And I did, to get a new groundwater withdrawal permit, um, if we could do it. Uh, because of the in-stream flow rules and things of that sort, I'm guessing would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Um, at least a two hundred and fifty thousand, if not more, investment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we're getting a lab report here from twenty sixteen. But we just pumped this.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
But I think we.
Right.
Pumped it again, just to confirm, I believe that there was no PFAS.
That's right, that's exactly what we did because there was concern about keeping it in the loop. And we did it, went out there and pumped it. And we will, like I said, we're gonna be doing a longer-term pump test on this just to get the re-permit done, uh, and we'll be doing another PFAS.
Right.
Jamie, I pulled up those results from two thousand sixteen and two thousand twenty and I emailed them to you too, just in case you guys wanted to talk about them. But um, Dawn's got a copy in front of him.
Okay, they didn't come in yet, but.
What do you guys think about moving forward on that?
Oh, here it is. I have table two now on the um, M, okay. Yeah, so everything was non-detect. MSG four. Yeah, so when two thou, oh, so you have it, two thousand sixteen, everything was non-detect and everything in two thousand twenty was non-detect.
And that was a test well right next to the main well, right?
For SG, well, I think we pumped the actual well. Oh, no, it's a proxy well. You're right, correct, thank you. Yeah, thank you, that's correct. The proxy well next to the pumping well.
No, this, this, this might be where this is coming from. It doesn't say non-detect, it says less than four point four. Is that the threshold of the?
Yeah.
That's probably where we're coming from.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't say non-detect, it says what the threshold is, the minimum threshold, and that's what we were looking at. That would make sense. Yeah, because I do remember something in the, in the lines of four, for PFPA.
To to make it a functional well, you know, go to that next level, how we even. Like started design process where.
Really haven't done anything. It was better. Really with. Two thousand sixteen, the whole just, you know.
Yeah, we, I mean, the other wells have been priority too.
Yeah, we don't even have the permanent production well, and I thought we did, but we don't, we have. Right?
You know, I don't know. Yeah, I don't think we do, I think we'd have to.
Because you just have the six-inch well that you're gonna test again, right?
I think we have an eight-inch well in there.
Is it eight inch?
Yeah.
But that wouldn't be the permanent, would it, Jamie? Or would we'd have to?
You could use it. I mean, it's up to you. You could use that, but you know, typically we'd put in a twelve inches of production well.
Three hundred gallons a minute, so.
Couldn't use that.
Probably don't even need a vertical turbine, you might even be able to get a submersible or something.
Yeah, I would, I would probably use, I'd probably use it, a, a submersible.
Yeah, which would probably go in, was that like a six-inch pump in an eighty-inch well, probably?
Five and three, three quarters.
Yeah, yeah. Because, because uh, I think when we did our about source evaluations that Underwood did to cost out the source. I think they plugged in the cost of a new gravel pack well. So if we don't need that, then the cost of Mitchell Woods might be a little bit lower than what's in that graph, so.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that, that's something to look into, I think. I, I think I would still be in favor of this proposal. The more we talk about this, the better it sounds. If there is no detectable PFAS and if there's a chance we could use the eight-inch. Test well that's out there and save money on having to put in another gravel pack well. Maybe.
Yeah.
You know? I don't know, that, that's something I'd be interested in. Confirming that, because a gravel pack well is probably what? Forty, fifty grand, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, more than that, you know, at the time, if we get to that, um, it's, it's not a super deep well, so I mean, that's, that's the nice part. But, yeah, there would be, there would be some savings there if we went with the eight inch.
Jamie said something earlier that adding the supply to the distribution system might be a challenge, is that, is that true?
Distance-wise, you mean?
We'd have to run some pipe and it would probably, I mean, we'd have to use a. Pump directly into the high-pressure zone, so I just uh.
High-pressure pump.
A high-pressure pump.
Right, but we wouldn't have to run a big line to any of the main. We don't have to get out to the road, right?
Um, we'd need to get out to Mitchell Street.
Right.
With that being said, I, I don't know how much we'd wanna. Look at any, it's AC pipe out in that area. I don't, wouldn't think it'd be an issue, but we may wanna. I guess do some reinforcing to, or just really look at it, just to make sure we're not causing any. Or else or anything.
And that's in the high-pressure zone too, so that helps that. Anybody in favor of making a motion to accept this um, proposal? And if so, what?
I was just gonna.
Fun would it come out of?
Can we uh? The capital reserve account, uh, system development charge capital reserve account. Um, it stands for future.
Well, sources.
Sources, correct. Just with everything going on, I.
No, I agree.
Oh, yeah, I'm, yeah. So um, if that's the case.
One more question, so. That well is pretty close to Parker Drive from the tank out there.
Yes, it it.
I wouldn't say pretty close.
Closer than any, any other tank.
It would be closer than, yeah, I mean, it's closer than the booster. It's kind of in the middle, I guess.
I was just wondering if, if we couldn't use, yeah, bringing the tank back and, you know, allowing a little bit more for the fluctuation in summertime and. It may help us reducing a little bit, you know, purchase of water, just because of two days here, two days there, if we use that parking tank.
Certainly look at how that uh. I don't know how it would respond. I know we're putting more water into that, that area, so. It may fill. The same as a Turkey Hill tank, I guess. I know there is some. From the booster to Turkey, I'm sorry, not Turkey Hill. Hudson tank, it's all sixteen-inch main where it's. Um, Mary meeting to um, Parker tank, it's all twelve-inch main, so there's some hydraulic differences there. But we do, they do fill, they do level out, so it may, it may need that, I'd have to.
I'm still thinking because we usually purchase water only for a couple of days in a row, right? If we do purchase water from Penny Chuck, it's usually not like an extended.
Um, it's been, there's.
Depends what reason, I guess.
I guess. Reason, but it. It, it would, it, it benefits going, two things, going into the high service. If, if the booster was to fail for any reason, we still have water going in, into the high service, without, without having to boost it up. And it is, it's less theoretically, we would have to put into that, so it does give us more in the regular system as well, regular pressure zone.
How long, like, how far in advance can we produce water into the tank without it becoming a problem with bacteria?
That, I guess that would depend on temperature and everything else, um, there's, there's some variables there.
But just ballpark days?
Um, I think we could have, we'd have a few days.
Few days.
Probably a few days, I would say.
Okay.
But I would, I would imagine that would, we would. Unless it was some sort of a power failure or something like that, typically we're filling, they empty as.
Right.
Okay.
There is some line, and they're not emptying, I shouldn't say that. There is some volume and they're not emptying, I shouldn't say that, but it's, there is some volume going in and out of those, both, both the tanks.
All right, any other questions on this proposal? Assuming somebody might move it.
Just a quick one. I remembered this being three hundred. What was it, three hundred gallons a day or something like that? As opposed to four thirty? Did you say it was four thirty, Jamie? Is that just a peak? Three hundred gallons, three hundred gallons a minute is equivalent to four hundred and thirty-two thousand gallons a day.
A day.
Yeah.
And that's something that we could only run seasonally for a couple of months out of the year, basically?
Yeah, so you get forty-five million gallons a year out of it. So.
Okay.
It's a fairly substantial source.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I would move, we go forward with this and accept the proposal, including the contingency. And you're gonna get the funds from the system development?
Capital.
Capital reserve account.
I'll take that as a statement, not a question. Absolutely. We'll take it right from that account.
All right, that's. Just to be clear for the minute taker, we're talking about the October fifteen, twenty twenty-one. Proposal from Emery and Garrett, proposal number thirty-three point. P zero 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 five one point two two. So that's motion by John. I hear a second from anyone. Second, second by Paul. All right, any further discussion? Nope. All right, well, do the roll call vote. John, you go first.
Hi.
Paul, what, like?
I actually vote against this and just because I want to make sure that remember, remember this, that we really have to start making the decision here.
Yeah. Gotcha. Ken?
Kind of like this, like we had, like, kind of like a plan actually for Mitchell Woods going forward. So. Stringing that along.
All right, so. If this permit runs out in March twenty-second, we're spending a quarter million dollars to get back to where we are today. Right?
At least if you can get it, right?
So I'll vote yes, but on the. Because of the cost, but, but, but we, then we take it ser- consideration.
That's my point, exactly.
I guess there's just, you know.
You, you can still vote no, I'm gonna vote yes anyway.
Hey, no deals here.
I'll, I'll vote no.
All right. And I'll vote yes, so that carries three, two, zero in favor, marginally. With a. Large exclamation point for us to make sure we move on this thing if that's gonna be.
In general, I'm fully in favor of this, but I really want to see us making a decision with Mitchell Woods.
I agree. I mean, because he's constant, a little.
I know. Money, yeah. Okay.
All right. Last on the agenda for me, I think, is the, the, the really good meeting we had with. Fidelity, I want to just, you've seen the email, but Chuck Carberry and Ken Dodd of Fidelity presented a Zoom presentation to us. Which they put together to demonstrate that they are one hundred percent serious about the sustainability. Of their environmental programs and how that would impact their reduction of salt use at Fidelity. Their targeted goal is, and as a company, is to be salt-free by two thousand and twenty-four. They have hired a, a group that's put together a sustainable winter management program. Which they showed us actually the cost that they're spending initially. This is just the beginning of the thirty thousand dollar event that they are invested in. So very significant. They are, this store or this sustainable winter management program. Is going to be looking at heated walkways, using brine, removing areas to be salted. Getting Snow Pro certification for all of their operators, using non-chloride products, using cameras to monitor their applications. And monitor the salt volume per use of their, you know, to main, to, to confirm their reductions. They were one hundred percent serious, they were one hundred percent engaged, and they were one hundred percent in support. Of what the MVD commissioners were trying to promote. So it was, I thought it was extremely refreshing. They have asked, Ron asked the. Asked them if we could use signage on their property to designate the wellhead protection areas. And they said they would be willing to do so as long as we used the, if we used. The MVD's content, which whatever we said would be on the sign, but use the fidelity platform. Because apparently there's a certain platform that fidelity all over the world uses for their signage. And we would have to comply with that without going through sixty administrative hoops to get it changed. So that seemed like a reasonable thing for us to comply with. So, you know, we have a scheduled meeting in November to follow up on their, on how they're coming along. And they've hired a contractor that is going to be tasked with. This winter sustained winter management program. So I was really, I just, I hope that these guys then become the model for everybody else in Merrimack to follow. They feel like they, you know, I feel like they're taking the leadership on and. You know, Ron, one of the, or Don, one of the things that was mentioned, I didn't realize is that they were on the call. Even though we didn't think they were on the call when we had our last presentation, they were in the car and listening. So. That was encouraging because I know we thought maybe they weren't engaged in that last presentation we gave, but they were.
Right, right.
So I, I just wanted to share that with you because I think it was positive. And then I guess one thing that we haven't talked about, and I actually haven't spoken to Jill and Ron about this at length. But the source water protection grants are coming up. They're due November first. And I do believe that you could possibly get thirty thousand dollars from the state to help with the signage. Process. So I didn't know if that's something we want to do and try to throw together a proposal in the next two weeks to consider that or not.
Absolutely, Jamie. I was intending to touch base with you on that.
Okay.
Great.
Discussing the last meeting.
Yeah, I know, a million other things.
We had to go on vacation, so. So is it something we could, we could do like a. You know, like, it might be a little premature, but a press release almost. I mean, this is really awesome, right? I mean.
I, I just had a comment here.
Yeah, I've been working for this for two years and all of a sudden it seems like one of the major players in town is really. Participating, right? So.
I think so. I'd say why not?
I mean, I think you'd want to have them, I think they would want to do that, and I think, but I think we'd want to run that through them.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
But I think they would like that publicity as well, to be honest with you.
Well, provided they have done something for real, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we wait to see some action first or do we try to? Talk about what, what the, what they're going to do as accolades?
Well, I think if you get them in the public stating they're going to do that, it gets, it kind of puts the nail all the way through the board.
It's true.
Right. So that's what I, I had a comment here about, you know, public accolades from MVD could make other landowners want to do the same thing. Sending press release to other landowners and the WAPAs. You know, that, if, if, you know, if we're willing to, to make accolades where they're deserved, there could be other businesses that are in our wellhead protection areas. That might want to consider doing the same thing. And, you know, because PR is a big camp, is a big marketing tool to everybody as well, so. And, and when you're doing something good, you ought to get a pat on the back for it. Everybody should know about it, so. Does someone want to talk to Fidelity about, you know, with their, what, what that, what they would envision that would look like or something? So we're on the same page? Yeah, okay.
I think a lot of what they, you know, what Jamie's, from Jamie's notes, they may be, they may want to write it themselves.
Sure. I think that'd be a great thing that we can do on our part to, to show them that where, you know, we've asked for the, their assistance and they're, they're doing it. And we ought to, you know, reciprocate that, I think. Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea. Good.
Maybe add that as an extra item.
Yeah, actually, that's a good point.
Do we end it with, like, if you're a business in the Merrimack area and you'd like to learn more about salt reduction, contact blah, blah, blah?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and mention that we have a salt committee that they can also join on and be part of. I don't know if we have a regular meeting scheduled for that, but you know, we can, we have a list and we can get them on a list. And the next one that comes around, we can be sure to copy them. Yeah, great, good point.
Don, we may have to have your signature if we do get this proposal pulled together in time, because I think it may need a commissioner's signature or maybe even a letter. I'm not sure. I gotta look at it in detail.
That grant you're talking about?
Right.
It's the authority to borrow, which we have that.
And when's that due?
November first, I think.
All right, I'll still be here. I'm taking, I'm gonna be away for like three weeks in November, but I'll be here by the first anyways.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Great, awesome. Awesome. I hope you go somewhere fun.
South Carolina.
Oh, that's fun.
Partial, partial vacation and work and vacation, so. We'll find a little work.
I know that feeling.
Yeah.
Well, good. I think, I think that concludes my section. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, any questions for Jamie? Oh, the only thing I had was. Just real quick, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time, but just a real quick overview of where are we, where we're at on the Wilson Hill. Project. As far as. What were the test wells or something is the next plan? You, you have, you have a authorized scope of work for that, I think, right?
Right.
And I understand if you guys were spending all your time on the pump tests, I understand. I just didn't know if you had anything to report on Wilson Hill.
I really don't. We haven't, we, we've identified where we're gonna be drilling. I think we've met with the owners to show them. I think they've agreed to where we would put the test wells. And right now we're waiting on a driller. Got a, drilling has been backed up all over the place. So I don't really have anything new to report, but I don't have anything negative. I think the owners are still been very cooperative and so that's been good.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Yep.
All right, I'm good. Anybody else?
I have a question for Jamie. I just, I was listening in as a panel, as an attendee, and then I just, Jill just sent me a panel. List invite, so just on the well number nine. You know, moving ahead with that one. So are we, are you waiting till next month to make a decision on that? Some things that we did tell the contractor that we. Have to notify them by December thirty-first. That's the date that's in the contract that we have to notify them that.
Yeah.
That either that work is in or out.
Other than connection. So they're either gonna do it or not.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, but some of, you know, and we put it in the contract that said, you know, all the well nine work, you know, is out of it. You know, but now we're getting into like a situation where they're doing some under slab conduit in the electrical room. And it's certainly ideal to, you know, do some of the, you know, this, you know, the conduits for well nine underneath there. Because that's gonna be, you know, some four inch conduits and stuff. It's just gonna be, it'll be very messy trying to stick that in, you know, you know. Into the panels, you know, above and all that kind of stuff. It's a lot easier just scooting out the bottom of the panel and up underneath the VFDs and that type of thing. So we're putting in a couple of. Of the conduits in there, but then the VFDs are a big item, you know, so there's a long lead item on those. So the sooner we can get those released. The better contractor also mentioned something about, you know, it'll be very tough getting those VFDs into the building, you know. So it would be, you know, he was thinking that, he was hoping that the VFDs could be, be delivered before he puts the roof on, so he can kind of crane them into the building, into place. Instead of trying to, you know, shuffle them through the doors and all that kind of stuff, so. If we are gonna be going ahead with that, the sooner the better, I guess, to let the contractor know, so we can kind of coordinate all the things that we're doing. But I also understand that you need some time to, you know, make sure that you want to be going ahead with it.
Well, if you're.
Definitely decided that we wait till November to kind of make that last bit of decision, but if you had to know tonight, probably say.
No, I, I think if we, if made a decision at the November meeting, I can let the contractor know that, that, you know, they'll be. You know, be making a decision at that point. That would be great, I think. Just to give him a little bit more time, so.
What does the board feel on that? I mean, if, if we're risking time delays, I'm all for, I'm all for proceeding with building out that plant as if well nine. Was already a permitted active water supply.
Well, the conduit is not gonna add much cost, is it?
No. It's not. Ordering the VFDs would be some cost.
Yeah, so the conduit, that would be perfectly fine to approve. I mean, what, do we have a number for that?
No, we don't. It's just, it would be peanuts because it's, you know, it's just, you know, some sweeps and some, you know, conduit under the slabs, all under the electrical room, which is like a twelve by twelve room, you know.
We can approve anything without a number, right? So we, at least we would have to guess a number, but.
Yeah, well, would, would you be approving that or would Ron be approving that to the small one?
I would say I, I could be, I would be approving it.
Well, we have contingency funds too, right, in the project, so you could.
We do, but it's, it's. It's safe to us. We're gonna get something out of nine, so.
Yeah, right.
There's gonna be some pre-purchasing. My only, I know the VFD was a little. It's a little bit different because if it comes in, like, you know, it significantly less, it might be a different VFD that's packed, but. We, we purchased a pipe already. There was some things we've purchased ahead. And, and I was, we had a construction meeting last week and, and we'd already talked about some of this, but, but no, I'm. Yeah, we need to put that in, we're ready to run the conduit down the hill. It doesn't make sense to dig the trench twice and that kind of stuff.
Right, right.
More of a chance of something getting hit too.
But so, so Peter, what is in, there's two prices, right? There's, there's the, the agreed upon price without well nine, and then there's the price with well nine, the additional?
Yeah, the, it's actually a separate bid item. We have bid item number two is actually all work for well nine. And that's about seven hundred ninety thousand or in that ballpark.
Oh, it is that much? So that's VFDs and everything? I thought it was just running right out to well nine.
It's, it's everything that goes along with well number nine. So it's the well number nine pump, it's the water line going out the well nine, there's a condo going out the well nine.
Right.
The VFD, anything that has to do with, you know, then there's the flow meter that's gonna begin to vault outside, you know, right next to well number two. That's gonna be in it. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things, you know, that.
I, I would say we should make the decision to move on this now, because if we wait a month. We're just gonna get it back on the back end. We're gonna be a month delayed. There's no doubt. We can't get anything now. We, we order stuff now, we can't get it. Why wait another month to not get it for another three months longer than if we order it now?
Yeah, no, I.
We need to get this, we wanted to talk to you about getting the construction of Wells nine and two done even sooner than you had said last time. So by not moving forward on this is completely opposite of what.
As long as we get the permit. I mean, digging the trench is one thing, buying a VFD for a hundred twenty thousand dollar and the pump is, is, is another.
Can the VFDs be if, if.
I think if it's oversized, it's okay. It's only when it's undersized, right?
Okay.
Is that, is that true, Peter?
I, I believe that's the case, but I do not want to make a final determination until I talk to my electrical engineer, but I believe that's the case, yeah.
There, there were concerns. If the roof's on and, and.
Yeah, so now there's an extra cost to dismantle and, you know, yeah.
But if we don't get the permit, then we don't get us time back, right? So we have to watch that a little bit.
I mean, I think we're gonna get something.
Yeah.
Whether it's a thousand gallons a minute or. Whether it's a thousand gallons a minute or it's five, you know.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, if it's not a thousand, I'm gonna be in the DES's face because come on, man, we need.
Drive.
I'm on record right now. They can watch this meeting and I promise I will be in their face about it. Anyways, that's just my opinion, but you can make the, I'm all on board moving forward with this full full bore because it's it's gonna cost us more by waiting. And if this if if they don't come through with a permit, if we get zero out of this well, then we're in a big trouble.
Yeah.
But do you realistically see us getting zero out of this well? I don't.
Well, the point is that we may need to buy less water from Pennington.
Right.
If this is timed right.
That's why I'm trying to see if this thing can time out.
So we could save some of the expense.
Because if we can get this thing up and running before the summer peak hits.
I I can get, you know, I would say to you from my end, there's nothing additional that's going to be black and white that would cause you to say that it's a better decision in November than today. So I would concur with you to say move forward as quickly as you can because we won't have a permit. We won't know what that permit's gonna be until March or April. So
Right.
That's beyond the point of our understanding. Anyways, we got, you know, tripped up by the weather and the reality is is that I I believe, you know, that we will get something in this well and I I fully believe we'll get that. I mean, I I have no real serious concern at this point that we won't get what we're pursuing. So in terms of the 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 thousand gallons a minute, I just know that we're, it's not, it's I just need the expectations for the board to know that there's things that can go bump in the night in these reviews and and whatever might happen. But I think that it would be, I don't, I think you should move forward with it because there's too much to lose. I concur in the fact that ordering equipment is delayed and I don't think there's anything we want to do that delay this treatment plant in any way, shape or form. That's.
Can we can we reach out to DS and and, you know, put a bug in the ear, you know?
They won't, they won't, they won't even give me the time of day on that until they see something.
Yeah, that's that's pretty common with the regulators, I think, on something like this. But I guess what you're saying, Jamie, and there's really nothing new to learn between now and November's meeting?
No, I mean, I'm gonna get the data. I'm gonna get the final recovery data. I'm gonna get the final water chemistry data, but I mean, I don't see at this point, I mean, if there was, if you if it made a big difference, I, you know, in terms of your timing, they're postponing for months, so it doesn't make sense. So.
Right.
It's a tough one and I knew we were gonna be here. I'm just the the things that I were, I wanted to know is what, how much water can we pump out of that well? What was the drawdown? You know, what was the interference gonna be? And is it something that I had sufficient, you know, there was enough water available to continue on that kind of withdrawal plan? So that part of it to me is is good. Right? The environmental piece is the piece that we've got to sort through and that's probably not gonna be sorted through anyways in November. So I mean, we'll have more fully than it ever.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's highly subjective, that whole environmental impact analysis. It's definitely not a black and white thing, I don't think.
No, it's not gonna be black and white.
No, right.
Not at all.
And the funds for all of this are coming out of the warrant articles, right? Because this is in lieu of building the
Yep.
Iron manganese tray.
Coming out of, yes.
So we don't, we don't need to delay for fun for funding reasons.
So you you're talking about the treatment plant part or the actual well nine development?
Mine's coming out of that as well.
Oh, it is?
It's an eligible, it's an eligible, it's because it's a direct replacement for free.
Right.
Okay.
And we're clear on that, right? We're we're watertight on that.
Yep. Glad you said that because I wasn't aware of that.
No, I thought so. I want to make sure.
I thought the well permitting and pump tests and all that was at a separate.
Yeah, that is, that's at least we're not concluding that on a dispersment request is Jamie's work is being done, I I believe out of a separate warrant article, but the actual pump itself that's going into well nine and that type of thing is coming out of the treatment plant project.
Okay.
But I think it's separated by Jamie's work and then the work that we're doing.
But it could come. It could come from both really Jamie's work, right? Because it's still.
It could. We had it. So we're using up for that new well fund and that kind of stuff. So we we had some other funding that we were using. It's not, it's not coming out of budget or anything like that. Okay. But yeah, that is correct, Pete.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
And then one thing that we could do on that is if you did want to move ahead, the uh, the one very, you know, so I'll check with first, I'll check with our electrical engineer and just verify that a larger VFD would not be a problem. But then the one thing that I would like to, you know, hold off on a little while until Jamie gets some information is the actual pump because also, you know, we're specing out a pump that so we're we're looking at a pump that's gonna be capable of pumping between eight hundred and twelve fifty. So we went larger than a thousand because uh, and we did that on both the well two pump and on the well nine pump. So if for some reason, the well number two building or the or the well itself is is, you know, down for maintenance, then you could pump well nine at twelve fifty, okay? And still get more out of that aquifer and then vice versa. Something was being done on well nine, well two could, but we didn't want to try to size too big of a pump like fifteen hundred because then if we're trying to run it down where our normal operation is somewhere around a thousand gallons per minute, we'd be running at a very inefficient spot and you would be at a, you know, the electrical cost would be a lot higher. So we we were able to work in and get the twelve fifty at one age, uh, one end of the sort of the sweet spot of the pump curve and the eight hundred at the other and the thousands right around the middle. So it all works out nice. So if we were gonna just say that Jamie, you know, they get permitted for eight hundred gallons, you know, we would probably want to get a little smaller pump there. So that would be the only thing that I would be a little bit wary of and I don't know, you know, how long that will take for Jamie to determine that. But I think the VFD is the biggest lead item that we're gonna have.
Wouldn't you be able to turn the VFD down though to eight hundred if it was that?
You could, but then you're you're a pump, you know, it would, it would, you're you're, because then and we could get turned it down to eight hundred, we would be right at that low end of that sweet spot, but we are kinda. Yeah, you you could do it.
So the way I see this falling out is it'll be a thousand gallons a minute and it may be a thousand gallons a minute twenty four hours a day, fifteen hours a day, twelve hours a day, something.
Okay.
So I don't think it's gonna be, you know, I I don't, we're not gonna, we're gonna go towards a gallons per day.
Okay.
And so so that pump should be okay.
Okay.
One one thing I have to do is like, you know, I have another conference call I gotta take in at seven forty five, so I only have a couple more minutes, so. Unfortunately. Did you have something you wanted me to ask about four and five wells?
Oh, just you have four and five, the, um, so when and I was talking with Keith about the, uh, you know, emergency connection and that type of thing. And so four and five, right now, you have a a maximum volume that you can take out, you know, per year. Um, and then so that well was run um, a little bit higher during the winter months last, you know, during this year, you know, January or February, Marchish or so of this year. And then if you all of a sudden now turn it up again, uh, you know, to that six twenty five, you might uh, go beyond that uh, annual permitted volume. But this year was a fairly wet year, you know, so I'm thinking that, you know, the aquifer really didn't get stressed too much. But that was just one concern I had with that, you know, do we want to be checking with Jamie and checking with DES to make sure that, you know, if you do go over that this year, that it's all right because it was a, you know, barely wet year and your aquifer levels are not down.
Peter, what's the permitted capacity of those four and five? I think it's four hundred gallons a minute.
Yeah, well, we are looking at it right now. It uh, it the maximum of that aqua, uh, aquifer was eight hundred on a short term and then six twenty five on a long term pumping.
Six hundred twenty five thousand gallons a day.
Yeah, no, just six hundred twenty five gallons per minute and I forget what the total volume was and I I don't have my drawings right here.
Okay.
So. I just didn't want to, you know, if we're going with that, you know, that that procedure with using well four and five and then the Penachuk connection, I just didn't want to go over that or if we did go over it, then we sort of have approvals to do that.
Jamie, we're we're permanent for eight seventy out of four and five, and I know your report showed, um, sustained yield was, I want to say it was four, four twenty GPM, and I think we could use the six.
Six twenty five?
Six twenty five for short periods.
Yeah, four twenty, that's right. This is the sustainable yield is six hundred thousand gallons a day. Right. Um, the combined pumping rate of eight seventy six is the maximum capacity. And but I don't know what the actual legal permitted capacity is at this point for that well.
I I thought it was six.
Oh, here it is. I just found it. I pulled up the drawings. It's two hundred and twenty million gallons per year and that's per the EGGI two thousand and three report.
Twenty million gallons a year?
Yep. That's what we had on the basis of design drawing for the well four and five project.
That's six hundred and two thousand a a day on average.
Yeah, so that's four hundred twenty gallons a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's what I thought it was.
Right, but I I think we've been pumping it at, or at least I correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but we've been pumping it a lot at six twenty five, right? Beginning of the year we were.
We started out with that and we're back down. I want back down to, uh,
We're pretty close.
Like in that four twenty range.
But if you've been, you know, but if you've been using that every single day, if you did four twenty five every single day, you know, pumping at twenty four seven, you would be at that two hundred and twenty million. So anytime that you kind of went over that four twenty five, that's gonna push you past the two hundred and twenty million. So any that you did this winter or any additional that you did this summer and what we're gonna do this late fall and winter is gonna push you over that two twenty.
But and Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we were permitted for eight seventy, eight hundred and seventy gallons a minute.
That was the original, that was the original permit, but that got revised when you did the wellhead protection program. It's the way I understand it. Back in two thousand and three. I think that permit got revised to.
Carbon filters are overdesigned?
Now.
The treatment plant, yeah, we we ended up having, it was sort of over, you know, somewhat overdesigned with the thought that if you're doing artificial recharge and that type of thing, you can get back up to that eight hundred.
Right.
Seventy, or if you wanted to pump at a short term pumping rate, it was rated at eight eight hundred and seventy gallons per minute on a short term basis.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm not sure exactly what the term is for short term.
I don't think there's any issue that you can, because the wells were offline for a long time for construction and um, I don't remember how many days, but I I think that you would be okay if you keep to the two twenty million per year. Um, and even then, I think that with the conditions that you're faced with right now, as long as the, you know, we don't see de-watering of the aquifer, I think you're gonna be okay. But it might be worth at some point, um, we might have that, might want to have that conversation down the road with the state. Uh, I'm, you know.
Isn't it more important where where our water levels in the aquifer are? Are we, um, is this like, was that was that permit limited because of environmental impacts to any wetlands or something or?
It was. It was limited by the amount of recharges that would sustain that rate.
Right. So if we're in periods of the season or or abnormally wet season where the recharge is abnormally high, like we just went through, I don't see why.
That's not, yeah, but that's not how the permit, that's not how the state looks at it, but but for the short term, I think Don, that's worthy of that conversation if we needed to go there.
I I think I know the circumstance that we're facing where we were looking at buying water from Penachuk that makes a lot more sense to maximize this, especially in the situation where we're at. Where where I'm assuming that the recharge has been so high that the water levels out there must be yeah, more than acceptable, far above their minimum standards anyways.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I I thought. I would say the same thing. I think you got a great argument for it, but do you just need to get, you know, get DES to go, yeah, we agree with you, you know, then you don't have any problems of all of a sudden you got, you know, at the end of the year, you got too much withdrawal. So.
So couldn't we, could we use that to our advantage with the whole Penachuk situation? We just milk four and five a little harder.
Yeah.
If we go to DS and see if we can get a temporary, you know, approval for, let's say, six, eight months or something to work them a little harder.
I don't see why not. Can we verify that, Jamie, exactly what we're? Because again, I I thought we were eight eight hundred and seventy and I I didn't realize that was for that six or the six twenty was, um, I thought it was just a report more so and we we kind of on iron. I didn't know that was kind of.
Peter, do you have the permit there in front of you?
I do not.
Oh, does Peter? Peter, do you?
No, I do. I do not.
Well, and we don't have to answer that right now. I don't want to drag out the meeting. I would just might like to create an action item if you guys all agreed that we.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. How hard can we work four and five for how long to compensate for shutting off seven and eight?
I mean, we can certainly, the groundwater levels will dictate as we need to back it back down and and then um, you know, my thought is if we're, we need that extra, then two comes online for short periods of time.
Yeah.
That's what we have to.
And and we can still take advantage of of that, you know, emergency agreement with Penachuk here until seven and eight are online in spring, but I would feel much more comfortable having having that after under our own control, right? Plus we're saving money because.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So right.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
So.
And and this is an immediate thing because if we're thinking of turning on Penachuk this week, I was looking at some of the demand data and we're we're over one point seven. We're at like two point two million gallons a day right now. So if we only have capacity for one point six, if we're shutting every well, we won't be able to shut any other wells, all of our other wells off. If we got to deliver two point two, we can only get one point six. We're not there. So we're gonna have, you know, so the more we can get out of wells four and five, the more diluted we're gonna be that that's the whole point of everything we're trying to do. So it's it's an important thing. Okay. Yeah, so definitely make that an action item. Just, uh, what do we want to call that? Just understanding the permitted thresholds of wells four and five?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, you know, maybe even going as far and reaching out to DS and see, can we exceed those for the next six months?
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
And what's the repercussion if we just get a letter saying, add you?
I don't know. Something else we're gonna send out, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Well, and again, I'm not saying we're not doing the Penachuk thing, but it would be nice to have something up our sleeve, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I I think we're gonna need that extra volume at least until we get out into November, December.
Right.
Because we're not quite down to that one point seven average day yet, according to the numbers that through the middle of October. You know? So. All right.
Yeah.
Good point for bringing that up, Peter.
All right, thanks.
Just can I add, I don't want to extend the meeting either, but um, are we gonna do the watering thing thing in conjunction with this?
Uh, that's another question.
That might solve some of that problem.
I don't know.
I I thought that was kind of going hand in hand. I thought we were gonna, I think Penachuk's on the assumption we're gonna do some restrictions, but.
Yeah.
Well, that that was said outside watering at this point, nobody's really.
Well, some people are seeding lawn right now and they are watering.
Okay. Okay.
Cause they need to keep them moist every day.
There's gotta be a reason we're using two point two million right now instead of one point seven.
Exactly, yeah, and I, I wonder if some people just have their systems on, cause they have them on, it's not frozen yet.
Right.
Could be.
I think what, you know, we would have to then talk about maybe, you know, uh, um. Waivers for those people that have just overseeded.
Yeah.
That's fine, I don't imagine that'll last very much longer anyways. I was just advised not to seed. Last week, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the seeding, the seeding, uh, season is gone right now, should be anyways, I think.
And I don't, I don't think we have to open it up this week, I think if. Maybe it could be next week, we don't have to do it right off, but. We're talking like Wednesday or.
Yeah, I thought, you know, okay, I thought that was a done deal, but.
Well, I mean, we don't have, we can.
The letter gonna say we've already done it? That's going out like.
I think that was the purpose, that you already did the corrective action.
Yeah.
So, Don, I've gotta jump, I have to politely jump off, cause I've got another call here. But if, if, if you need anything, just email me and I'll be happy to address it as best I can. But thank you very much, sorry, I've gotta jump.
No, thanks, we got through everything.
Good, good, thank you.
All right, I guess this is a good segue into, uh. Update from Underwood Engineers.
Yeah, and then another thing about those, um, that emergency connection and stuff, uh. Just to keep in mind is if we're gonna be running wells four and five again at that six twenty-five, we gotta continue to monitor. Um, how the PFAS is moving through those and when the changeout might be.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so that's just, um, yeah, I know you guys have been watching that, but, you know, I, I, Keith kinda filled me in on some of the stuff and I like. I just had a couple of comments on it, so I just said, you know, those, and then also, and I assume Ron is taking care of this with, um. With Brian and stuff, but, you know, if you're gonna be shut, you know, I assume that if you need periodic water, you're gonna probably use well two. Because it, you know, has a little bit lower PFAS in it, and it's a lot easier to, you know, periodically operate, I think. Starting up the plant that seven and eight, you know, it takes a little bit to get the chemistry right and get that all going. You know, so you can't just turn that on for two hours and then walk, you know, and shut it off type of thing. But then along with that, you know, they, you're gonna probably wanna be running water through those filters every once in a while. Just to sort of keep the water fresh and all that kind of stuff. The good thing is, you know, for bacteria buildup on it, you know, you're. You, uh, pre-chlorinate, you know, before, you know, you oxidize before it goes into the vessel, so you do have that part of it. So if you run that periodically, you are gonna be putting some chlorinated water through there, so it's not gonna be like the, uh. Uh, GAC filters, cause if, if you were taking a plant offline with the GAC filters, you don't want any bacteria on those. And you wanna run those, you know, I know, uh, the contractor at, you know, Penta at four and five. After he got the GAC in there, he ran it every day for a little bit. You know, the vendor said to run it every two or three days, but he said, I'm not gonna get any bacteria built up on this thing, because it's. A nightmare to get rid of, so. Yeah, so I assume that, you know, Ron's gonna be working with Brian and, and what they're gonna be doing with that, but those are some of the things that just, uh. You know, that, that come up when you're starting to take some of these, you know. Um, facilities offline and using them in, in emergency situations, so.
Pete, I do have a question for you though, as far as seven and eight goes, can we use that, the new, uh. Uh, retention basin?
Yeah.
We can use that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, actually. Yeah. Yeah, it, 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 cause all the piping is, is gonna, it's all the valving outside and that's all done. So, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if the bay, it looks finished, I didn't know if it was technically finished or not.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it is, we could just double check with Wes, but, um, yep. I think that is.
Okay.
So you're talking about using it for the green sand filter backwash and the PFAS?
Yeah, so we had all the, so that was one of the things, we had all of them connected. So that we can, we can use whichever basin we want.
Okay.
So what we're having, we need to have the, the basins cleaned. Uh, or they, they're due to be cleaned, they're, they're not draining. All that fast, but I wanted to wait till after we get to, to the, um. The, the GAC media, and then we're gonna do our back washes, and if we have any, um. Arsenic issues or anything like that, I wanted to run them through the iron manganese basins to try to catch some of that before it went out.
Oh, yeah.
Um, just, not that we can't put it out there, it just kinda gets it bound up and, and, uh, then. Once through that, then we're gonna, we'll have them cleaned, right? So, in the meantime, I wanted to use the other basins to kinda, don't have to worry about. Running back into the clear well, but.
Okay.
Wouldn't we run seven and eight at a slow pace all the time during this? Upcoming period?
We, we.
Or is there a minimum rate that we need to run it?
We can, it just, it, it is hard to, uh, keep all, everything consistent to chemicals and stuff, um. It probably will just shut it off, we do need to do some maintenance, we're gonna, we're gonna replace some drain down screens.
Okay.
And I would be, again, I'm really hoping February-ish. And it was insane spring, you know?
Yeah.
But I'm really hoping in the February we'll have it back up and running, which would be.
So I do agree, if there's any maintenance that needs to be done, this is the perfect time to get. When we fire it back up, it's full capacity.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's important, I'm glad you mentioned that.
And there is a minimum capacity that you can run that at, because you can't turn your VFD down too far. So there's a limit on what you can turn your VFD down to, um, I guess you could put a little bit more head on it, I guess, if you wanna. You know, close some valves and stuff like that, the back pressure it a little bit, so you have the VFD up, but then it rides back on the curve a little bit for a pump rate. But.
I thought there might be concerns with, uh, channeling through the vessel if you run too little flow through it or something too, or?
Um, if, if that is with the green sand, you could always shut off a, a vessel or two, you know, so it just run through. One of them, or, or, uh, you know, instead of running through, you know, all of them, you can run through, you know, two of them or something, you know?
Right.
You can always do something like that.
Okay.
Yep. And if, you know, that's, I'm, I'm not sure what, what they want, what you wanna do on that, we certainly can, you know. Help, you know, insist Ron and, and Brian and, you know, we got the new pumps in there, we can look at, you know, what we can turn those down to if they wanna be running those. But we will be having something in the O and M manual on, you know, you know, what's the minimum pump rate that we had to be pumping each one of those at and stuff.
I guess if you wanted to keep that thing online and keep it fresh, you could always run it to waste too, but now you're paying chemicals and everything else to just waste it, so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, that you could, you could, you know, if you wanted to bump up the chlorine dosage, you know, just to make sure that you don't have any bacteria. And then just dump that into the recycle tank, and then the recycle tank slowly, you know, feeds out, you know, into the, um. Into the infiltration basins and stuff, so certainly can do that.
Operational considerations with all this, right?
Yeah, yeah, I imagine, uh, Ron and Brian are already talking about what they're planning on doing with that, so I think they. I haven't talked with them, but I assume they have some kind of, uh, thought of what they are doing, but.
That was gonna be the discussion for tomorrow.
Oh, yeah? There we go.
All right, so, um.
Okay, so then jumping into the project, I'll start out with, uh, well number two. So the, the work really started around the first of September, and, um. They're going at it pretty, you know, pretty good, they have most of the site cleared, they still have a little bit over by the infiltration basin to go. They are concentrating on the building, so they did not, uh, really grub everything and, and, you know, strip all the lom and all that kind of stuff. Um, but they got the building excavated, they have, all of the foundation walls have been poured, obviously the footings along with that have been poured. They started the underslab piping in the GAC room. And, um, with the goal of, uh, pouring the slab in the GAC room, uh, at the end of next week, so. They, um, the site guy is the same as the concrete guy, it's the same sub. So that's nice in the sense of coordination that, you know, they don't have to worry about two different companies. When this one comes in and doing this, you know, to help that one and that type of thing, so. That's working out nice and, and he's doing a nice job, you know, the, if you look at the concrete walls there, the night, you know, really, they look nice. So, um, so that one's moving along and, uh, still planning on, you know, that no, no new information, but the vessels are supposed to be shipped. December fifteenth, so that's a item that we talked about at every one of the progress meetings, and. He just informed us that there's been, you know, no change in that, so.
We were just talking the other day about that, I assume there are four vessels coming all at once?
I believe so, yeah, I'm not sure if they're becoming. Yeah, I'm not sure about that, yeah, they, you know, I don't know if they would do. They're actually coming from the same exact plant as the vessels from seven, eight, so. They're coming from Iowa, yeah. But I'm, I'm not sure, and I don't think he knows how they're gonna be shipping that.
I was just curious if it's the same truck running back and forth, it's gonna take like four weeks as opposed to, you know?
Yeah, no, I don't think it's the same, you know, at one.
If, if there's a way you could get that to be four of them in a row and have the.
Because, yeah, because that's what, you know, when they did the four, five plant, they had the, you know, both vessels came at the same time, so they had one crane. So I, my guess is that they would do four, but at worst they would do two and two. You know, but they, I don't think they would wanna do one, you know, one, you know, one truck going back and forth four times, that doubt. Yeah.
It's gonna take a month by itself, you know?
Yeah, over a month, yeah.
So we could save, uh, you know, if we get four in a row. That's the most compressed time, timeline and.
Yeah.
That's kinda what we're looking at, is trying to compress that timeline as much as possible, so if that's a way to compress it. I don't know if it's too late at this point, if we can try to put that in place or not, but.
Yeah, I could check with the contractor on that, my, uh, my guess is that their terms and conditions of all that. Purchase have been done and they determined what that is.
Yeah.
I can double check though.
And these are thinner, right? Not as high during transportation?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're twelve foot diameter, yeah.
Yes.
Make sure they don't to take Route fifteen in Connecticut. Parkway.
It might not be three foot more clearance, cause it might be all different flatbed that it's on too.
True, true.
Yeah. Yeah, so I can check with them on that.
Alright, good.
Flat, that's kinda hit on well two, and then, you know, cause the big one I wanted to talk about was the well nine stuff, so. I will inform the contractor that we're gonna be moving ahead with that, then.
Yeah, and I don't know if anybody else disagrees, but. I, I, I really don't wanna like hold back on something that we, a month now, that's costing us a month later, you know?
And we don't need a vote, right? Because you have to budget, it's all in the budget for the, for the project, it's already.
It's gonna be change ordered in, cause we did not have, we, it has not been awarded yet, so I don't know if you need a vote for that. I'm, I'm not positive, but we do need to do a change order to add that work into it.
What did we do?
They probably should do a motion to award it.
But we can't, we could, we can't without the monetary.
We don't have, yeah, number.
Part of it.
Oh, we do, we don't have an amount.
It's in the contract.
Yeah.
I can get you the number.
Is it the nine hundred thousand you were talking about?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's seven hundred and something thousand, just, let me just find out what that is.
We're talking about awarding that whole piece of it tonight?
Oh, do you want to do that, or?
I don't know if we wanted to do that, I just thought.
Okay, I thought, oh, I thought you wanted to do that.
No. That's what I was thinking.
Maybe we.
I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna get something out of it anyways, but we just, when we'll hold off. Purchasing pumps, we know exactly what, uh, we're gonna get.
Yeah, but we're not gonna know that till March.
Yeah, but you have to tell the contract, it, it's actually six hundred and ninety thousand. In, per the contract, you have to tell the contractor by December thirty-first, and he has to hold his bid price. If you tell him January first, one day after, then theoretically he has a, you know, an option to come back and negotiate cost on that.
Alright, so if we award it on December twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Only then is he gonna start ordering equipment, right?
Yep.
So if we award it now. We're saving two months, we're getting a two month jump.
You're getting an over, yeah, two and a half month jump right now, yeah.
I'd say go now.
That, that's what I was kinda.
Yeah.
Well, I thought you would. But had an award, so.
And this was, this was bid out to three bidders as well, right?
Yeah, it was, it was one of the bid items in, in the original bid, so we had, I think, eight bid items. You know, for the whole project, and one bid item was well number nine work. Just so we could, you know, pull it out, you know, and, you know, just for this exact reason, you know?
And how did this bidder, the current contractor compare just for that bid item?
Yeah, let me just pull it up, uh, so he bid six hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, we only had two bidders, and then the second one was six seventy-five. So they were very close.
Park, yeah.
Please don't.
I mean, I, from what I just heard Jamie say, he's got a very high level of comfort that. You know, he, he even said he thinks a thousand is reasonable, he's just telling us because he doesn't, he wants to make sure that we understand.
Right.
We, I, I think we feel pretty confident the DS is gonna approve this, even if they approve it. For something less than a thousand, we're still gonna use it, we're still gonna go ahead.
Approve it tonight, we'll hold off on signing anything until. Uh, Pete gets the verification on the VFD if that can.
Pending that, yeah.
You know.
Contingent on that.
Yeah.
And even then, it's just gonna be a monetary change in. Cost, but. Yeah.
I mean, I think it would, well. It was a whole question, you get to one of the specs, claws it down rather than.
Right, and if it can't, then we would have to wait then, because we don't know what the capacity is, so we would have to wait, but if he says. Yeah, that's okay, using a larger VFD on a smaller pump, you're all set, then, then, then you would have no problem.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
We're shooting pretty hard from the.
Are we really, are we just doing this because we, we're gonna need nine to be without Pena Chuck over the summer?
Yes, yeah. Isn't that reason enough?
That's hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and, I don't know. How much is Pena Chuck costing us a month?
John, we're either spending that now or in two months, we're gonna spend it.
Right, yeah.
It's not if or one or the other, it's when.
Yeah.
So we have to spend it before we get DS approval, either way.
No, we don't, no.
Though, though before DS approval on the well you're saying, right? Cause Jamie's not gonna get approval on well nine until March.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And then, so you have to, and you have to make this decision either by December thirty-first, or if you wait longer than that. It's gonna probably cost more than six hundred.
And I'll make a guess right now, that six hundred and ninety thousand dollars that was laid out beginning of this year is probably fifty percent higher.
Oh, yeah.
After December thirty-first.
Yeah.
Guaranteed, cause what's not fifty percent higher than it was eight months ago?
So we're not in a pickle, we're in a really big pickle.
We are.
A pickle barrel.
What?
Right.
I don't, I don't, I know we're gonna get some, we're, we're.
That's what I'm saying.
Assume, but it's an assumption, we don't know.
Nervous to about the environmental impact at all? I mean, I didn't, I haven't seen Jamie that reserved about it before. Was my impression, when he was talking about the brook and all that stuff.
It sounded like it was a question of, if it's not a thousand gallons a minute, maybe it's gonna be.
I think.
A little bit less than that or something, you know?
I took it as, it was gonna take, it probably gonna be a longer process, cause the person was new.
Yeah, the review process for the.
Yeah, that's what I took it as, but.
Well, maybe I read it wrong, I don't know. Um, I, I don't, I didn't get the impression he thought it was gonna be a no, but I didn't really. I think, I just felt like he felt more positive about it, it, it is a concern to, to, to me. It is a risk, and it's not like the risk of drilling the well, which is like fifty thousand, now we're up to six ninety, right?
Yeah, cause the risk of proceeding. Yeah, because the risk of proceeding with the, we went right to the production well, remember that? So we saved like, what, eighty grand or something? Yeah, this. But we're not gonna know the answer on December thirty first either. We're not gonna know, we're not gonna know what the well's approved for until March or April.
And I'll give you that. The cost increase in January is gonna be serious. So I think that. That in combination with the savings that we can achieve is almost worth the gamble, but it's a pretty damn big gamble.
But the thing is, you're gonna need, if you put a well out there, you're gonna need a pipe out there. You're gonna need conduit out there, right? You know, so all these things, it's like. You unless you get, unless you say we're not gonna get anything out of the well, then there's a gamble that you might lose that money on the pipe and conduit and order, you know.
I think that's the issue.
I know.
I if we could carve this out, what we have to do, no matter where well nine will be, right? Is it, is it the well nine location or is it gonna be? You know, across the pond or, you know, five hundred feet over this way or that way. If we could just delineate that, I would feel much more comfortable.
Instead of worrying.
Instead of just the whole building, you know, not the building, but you know, the the whole. Pump motor and the pump and 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 the screens and.
No, I think they're gonna have to wait on that anyway. They wouldn't be able to order that because they wouldn't know.
But if we awarded, you know, we open up the door, right?
We have to. They have cementals coming in. If we don't know that number, then we can't approve that submittal.
If we can deline, if we can somehow draw a line on the sand, I would be comfortable giving the whole seven, whatever, six seventy five thousand, six ninety five thousand, just as a blank check without knowing. I'm worried about that.
I mean, the only thing we don't know if the well's gonna be for a thousand gallons a minute or eight hundred gallons a minute, I guess.
Is there, is there a way to just have, have, have them? Just have the treatment center set up, but the idea that we're gonna have another. Well, if it's nine or if we go back to three, just to have at least the in-house or they're doing the in-house work, have it ready to be connected. Whether or not it's well nine or if we have to find a different well or something like that, but just to have it. So it's the building ready for a next year. Well, you know what I'm saying?
You recall when that pipe works gonna be done, well, the uh that's that's next summer or.
Yeah, I think, and that's what I was thinking. If you want to do sort of a compromise on that, you know, maybe you say, okay, let's do all the, you know, under slab piping in the electrical room. Let, you know, the conduits are gonna be, you know, it doesn't make sense to trench twice. So let's lay the conduits from the treatment plant down the well two. Let's not put the wires in it. Let's then, let's order the V F D because that's a long lead item. Let's not do the piping out there. So really what you're doing is a under slab conduit in electrical room, the V F D. And the conduit's going from the treatment plant to well two. And then you say, and we talk to the contractor and say, okay, what is the cost for that? Well, approve that right now so you can get moving on that. And he'll like that too, that he can, you know, do some of that work right now. And then we can wait till, you know, later in the, you know, the year to say, okay, let's, let's award the remaining portion of it, the water main and. You know, the the uh the wires and the conduits and that type of thing.
So so those, so those things we'd be waiting on.
Well, is that?
Would those be a long lead item thing though or not?
Um, the pipe is already there because Ron purchased the pipe already. It's, you know, that what that pipe was. Right. Used for the pump test. So that's on site. They would have to, there's still gonna need a little bit of pipe. Um, but so that's not a big deal. Um, the wire would be, you know, going down there. That would, I don't, I don't know how long of lead items.
Yeah, I know.
Some of these things that you always thought were like, oh, you can get all of a sudden out of there just telling you. Or used to take two days, now it's a month, you know, or something. So, um, you know, wire is wire, you know, you figure that would, you know. That should be no problem, but I don't know. But again, if you're telling them and, you know, I again, I think wire would be a lot easier to get than a V F D, you know.
But you're saying you don't know if it will be easy to get?
No.
I don't, hey, I don't have the.
What we're saying is even if we wanted to break it up, which I thought we were gonna do in the first place, there's really no way. To tell what we could order now, what we can't.
No, because it's always the surprise that you don't expect. That's the, the thing that holds everything up that you don't know, you know.
But I know that, I know the V F D is gonna be a long lead item. That's a, almost a given.
I mean, the assumption is that if well nine doesn't work out, we're gonna keep digging, right? We're gonna keep trying in that area.
To get away from proving that it works. It's just we don't know what we're gonna get for volume. So we're gonna get something out of nine.
Right. So it may not be.
It could be three hundred gallons a minute. It could be a thousand gallons a minute. It's just somewhere between. So that pipe's gonna be used. The only thing that we would. My thought is the only thing that we 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 don't have a definite on, we have to wait till till we get the the report. Is the size of the pump and and all of that. I think everything and and Pete's gonna verify on the V F D. Yeah, so.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
And if the V F D works out, then it's just.
Let's go down on claims. I mean. What what did we say it's gonna cost us with Pennachuck water, even if we do get the reduced emergency rate? It's gonna cost us.
Sixty four a month?
Anybody have that?
I think it's like twenty eight. I think it was twenty eight a month.
Yeah, but when we're out in. May.
For the months that we plan to do it. Yeah, no. Just for the months we plan to do it.
That we're gonna have to build this, the thing over on Route three and.
That would be the, yeah.
It's a hundred and seventy five grand gone, gone. We're not gonna recoup any of that and it's gonna be another fifty grand to dismantle it. So it's money, it's it's gone. There's not even any salvage value.
That's fair point.
You know.
Then do it.
Okay.
It, I mean, it. You really think it all through.
Are we thinking nine's gonna be up and run running before the summer?
Yeah, in the summer, I I.
That's the goal.
Unless we hit a bridge.
That's what it's target. What did you say last meeting, July, right?
Yeah, I think contractually he has, and let me just look for that, but contractually I think he has until. August, but I think he was think hoping that if everything works out, he was gonna be more in the beginning of the summer. But, you know, again, we don't. You know, I don't know that for sure.
We haven't really seen that come true in any of the other.
Yeah, I know.
Amen.
I know.
So let's not delay. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I I have concerns that we're gonna have enough water this summer, whether we have, well, not whether we have nine or not, but. In terms of getting nine and two up and running. I know. Can we do this without nine? With just two, four, five, seven and eight?
No, because we have.
We should look into.
Yeah, but it's the treatment planet twos. That's the time delay. It's not.
But if nine's the only thing they gotta work on, it twos up and running and and the treatment plant's ready to go. We should be able to pushing, we should be able to push well two water through nine. Through the treatment, not nine, but. You know, maybe then at that point, maybe we supplement with, we still run Pennachuck if we have to, but.
You know, we'll have seven. But we're gonna need the pump station over there in Route three.
Well, with, I think it's, what are you saying? If twos running, it's gonna be compensating where we don't, we still just need a million gallons for Pennachuck.
And I just checked the um the uh contract. Their substantial completion date is September eleventh. Of next year, you know, so then, you know, if they have a few change orders in it, they'll probably push it out closer to the end of the month, but. So that's at least contractually what they're at, but they they wanna be completed earlier.
So do we. So do we. Well, I don't usually make motions, but I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, award the. What do I call it? The um.
Bid item number two.
Item number two for well nine contract in the amount of six hundred and ninety five thousand.
No, six ninety.
Six thousand ninety, six hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Yep.
Even.
Yep, exactly.
And that comes out of the um, the warrant article.
Yep, of the funding we have.
Funding for the warrant articles.
Who you're awarding to?
And that's to Kinsman Corporation?
Correct.
Motion by me, seconded. Second by Ken. Any discussion on this?
It's crazy, but it makes sense.
Yeah. Alright, no discussion, then we'll go by roll call. You sure there's no discussion?
I need a drink after this.
Are we sure that um there's not gonna be a, no, you can't do it because of environmental impact here?
He didn't, he didn't seem to say that. I mean, he was only worried about the volume. I mean, he did, I agree. He seemed a little. Less sure than he we, he did last time we spoke about this well, but. He didn't seem to think we have any issue getting it permitted.
And he did say we're gonna get something out of it if I remember right, right? So. And I mean, we're still approving every step along the way, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So we can pull the brake any.
Yep. Yeah, we can cert, we can certainly have a change order down the road and and cancel it out, I get. Yeah, if I'm, am I wrong on that, Pete?
Yeah, what's the termination clause on that?
Yeah.
And you could, you could always pull it out. That's why I didn't know if you wanted to, you know. You know, approved, you know, sort of that portion of it, you know, just, you know, the stuff that really is the big lead item, which we we think is the V F D, but. You never know, like you said, you never know what else could be a lead item, you know.
Can we approve?
I'll take the hit on it.
Can you approve just part of it? Wouldn't it still, couldn't you still potentially increase? If it would.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you order, if you approve, as long as you approve everything, I think by, you know, December thirty first. You know, I think that would be alright. Hopefully, you know, it says in the contract, you'll award bid item number two. It doesn't say you can award a portion of it and then another portion. So I don't know if he would say, well, if you only award a portion, you know, then it might go up or something. But definitely if you did not approve everything by December thirty first, then it could go up, yeah.
Right.
But again, what what is the termination clause? If we, for example, he buys the long lead items. Um, but we 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 pull. You know, we pull the plug before, before he's doing any of the physical labor, say, for example, for installation.
Yep, you you would, you would get something back, you know, certainly not a dollar on a dollar, but you would get something back, yeah.
So, but this is lump sum, right? Or is it percent complete or is it?
It's it's a, it's lump sum for that whole item, yeah, yeah.
Right, and it's sure the D S approves all of it.
D S will have more owners to approve it if they knew that we were. Betting on this. So we're advancing it for their, the recommendation of better water for everyone that is a public health issue. There you go.
It is.
We'll get Pennachuck behind us on the go. Alright.
I think we need to explain that a little bit for the public because not everybody listens to our meetings. Because nobody can really follow this.
Be my guest.
I was gonna say, anybody that I understand. But, so I mean, we all, we all know that, you know, that we got the violation notice from him, from D S regarding P F S and water because we had four. Consecutive quarters of being above the M C Ls to make some contaminant levels, right? We know that. We also serve water that we pass through. For Pennachuck customers over in Cabot Reserve. Because Pennachuck is our customer, we need to notify them as much as anybody, any, any other customer out there about the violation notice. Which at that point requires them to notify their cabin reserve customers. And everybody correct me if I'm saying this wrong, right? So Pennachuck basically says, we have a problem here and we want to help you with that. And we say, yeah, we're happy to accept that help. And the help is that. And it just suggests that we turn off well seven and eight, which are the most contaminated ones temporarily. Um, possibly two and three. More or less two and three, right? Unless we really need it.
Yeah.
Right? We usually have them off. And instead they're supplying us either three something or one something million gallons. Per day through two different options, one of which already exists, the one million gallons gallons a day is an existing connection to Pennachuck over at.
Oh, kind of.
Square, where we don't have initial investment. The three million dollar, I think it was, sorry, three million gallons uh a day supply would require about a hundred twenty, a hundred fifty thousand dollar investment. That would be only serving as a temporary additional pump station over at Route three.
Which would have a tear down.
Which we would have to tear down when this agreement ends. So we have additional costs. So ballpark, two hundred twenty thousand dollars ballpark. And that's just gone. That's, we're not, we're not, we're not recovering anything. That's only to serve. To to give us the ability to serve Pennachuck water for basically six to twelve months.
And and by approving this tonight could get us. The completion of the treatment plant. And wells two and nine connected to it. At an earlier date so that we can realize those savings in the. Will provide the extra water, treated water, so that we don't have to buy and build the pump station over at Route three. So we would be, be saving that potential two hundred thousand dollar plus cost.
Correct. And on top of that, the water that Pennachuck would have said would would serve us their water for, even though it's a very low. Emergency rate, that rate is higher than our. Rate, well, higher than the rate that we sell our water for.
Not the emergency rate.
No, it's, it's, it is more expensive than we can make it ourselves.
Right.
Right.
But it's still lower than than uh our retail rate.
But it still burdens our margin to the point that we're actually losing money in the end.
It's a cost to us, absolutely.
There's an additional cost.
Right.
Every day that we buy.
Somebody, wait, wait, wait. Can somebody quantify that for me? If we're buying this, if we're buying this stuff at whatever sixty four, sixty nine cents, wha- what's our retail rate?
Uh, for, who's, what, for Pennachuck you talking about?
No, he's about to sell our water.
Two eighty three, two eighty three.
So how are we losing money on that?
Because we still have our own operational cost, yeah.
Because we, yeah, we we actually make the water for, I want to say it was so twenty eight to thirty, twenty eight, thirty cents or hundred cubic feet.
The additional cost is sixty nine cents a cubic foot. Right? No, actually, it's, it's even less than that because we're saving twenty eight cents, right? So it's. The cost is the costs.
No, because we don't, we can't scale, you know, because we have fixed costs like building and depreciation, you know. And and debt, debt service, employees, insurance, we can't, we can't scale down by not running seven and eight. And 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 two, we can't scale down enough to compensate for the fact that we now have to buy and pay water from somebody else.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's why the overall deal is still gonna cost us money that we really haven't budgeted for.
Right.
So it was like, it was like twenty eight thousand a month in the, in the low months. And if we get. Seven and eight and two on in the summer months, we should be able to quantify how much it's gonna cost us in the summer, but we haven't gone through that yet. We don't even know.
Actually, we did.
We did.
It was like a hundred.
Did I miss a meeting?
It was originally, it was, numbers were reported by Keith. It was a spreadsheet and he had every month tally.
Yeah, that was a, bless me.
Oh, right, yeah, wasn't.
Yeah.
Wasn't that the the full deal though?
So he he was tallying the numbers out June, July, August.
Wasn't it like a hundred?
They were in hundreds of thousands.
Right.
Yeah, but wasn't that with both options?
Didn't I bring this?
I think he originally did it with both options, but he felt it wouldn't change that much.
With little options.
Well, the thing is, we're gonna be burning through about two hundred twenty thousand dollars that are just gonna come and go for basically six to twelve months of water supply from Pennachuck. If we go that route, because we need to build the additional pump station at Route three.
The goal is to become self-reliant.
And that's just gone, right? That comes and goes and it's gone. There's no value to it except for a second.
It was the hopes. Or there's no bridge or something that we uh. Well, seven, eight's gonna come on sooner. And it always seems like we're gonna have that connection for about, from.
Only a few months, yeah.
A few months. So it didn't, the 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 cost to.
Like April to.
Yeah.
July and August or something like that.
So I guess my question is really more like, not should we build this thing? I don't think we should build this thing either. My question is, by taking this action tonight. You know, is it gonna make any difference on how much water we have this summer?
I think it will if that treatment plant for nine, wells nine and two gets online sooner. We'll have more water.
Yeah.
In our own system.
Any kind of delays like that, yeah.
And it's treated water, non-detect.
No, I know. That's good. That's good. And I think. We're scheduled for two to be done.
we're scheduled for two to be done sometime in the early summer. Is that right?
And that's, uh, it's contractually, it's September eleventh.
Two?
So it's what?
Treatment plan for well two?
Yes. But he's hoping that he's good. He's hoping that he can get it done earlier, but contractually, that's where he's at. Is is that, you know, right at the beginning of the fall.
Good. So this helps us advance that, which gives us our own treated water faster, which allows us also to buy less water from Penney Chuck. Oh, because they know what to put in the treatment plant. And well nine's not a mystery anymore. Right.
They could, they can order that, order that material, yeah.
Right. And and the other thing is, if we go, if we rely on Penny Chuck water past April, we need to invest into the pumping station, the temporary pumping station.
Correct.
We can no longer live with the one million gallons that we can get.
Right, well, especially if we seven and eight are not up. If seven and eight are up, that was the hope, was seven and eight was gonna be up and running.
Right. And and Pete, do we have a date on that now currently for seven and eight?
So his his contractual data on that is March thirtieth, so it's right, right there, you know? So and on, and in terms of, and we're gonna talk about this later, at seven and eight, you know, so should we, you know, he's, I talked to the contractor on that. He's ready to, you know, once those vessels get there, he's ready to put the roof on and and, you know, and get going. So then once he gets going, we wanna, then we'll talk to him. He has to make sure that all of his subs are lined up. They say they're ready, but you know, are they ready? Are they gonna get there and and move along? And then we'll have, you know, in a month or two, we'll have a a better idea of, you know, is it gonna be, you know, that March timeframe, so?
We have a vote on.
We have a motion on the table, so um, but we were in the process of discussing. Are we continuing discussing the motion or if, cuz that we can call a vote at some point as soon as everyone wants to vote. Unless there's any more discussion, I wanna make sure everybody wants to have their say before they take the vote. So seeing no other discussion, uh, then I'll start, let's start with John. About?
Hi.
Did you say I?
I did.
Okay, thanks. Paul, about I? Wolf?
Hi.
Hi. And myself in favor. So five zero zero to award that uh, item two, is it, of the um the well set, wells two and nine treatment plant to Kinsman. All right.
All right.
Great. It's it's definitely a lot. There's a lot on the table to consider. So we'll just go through it all.
This one was, so Pete, did the, did the vessel leak today?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll get, are you, are we all done with nine and I can jump into seven, eight?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. So yes, uh, the the vessel, uh, the vessel left today. Um, it is due uh next Friday, so they're thinking.
I thought you said, did it leak today?
To leave.
Oh, I thought you did a leak test and it leaked. I was like.
No, no.
Sorry.
We don't want, we don't want that. Uh, so
Did you say arrival time is expected next Friday?
That's what they're, that's at least right now, that's what they're saying, yeah. Because it, the tough thing is, you know, going through some of the, you know, as you go through all the multiple states, they have, you know, different requirements. Last time they, you know, you you, I I forget what it was like, New York is some, had something like you, you know, you you only can drive certain certain hours and all this kind of stuff. Yeah, and so you know, and and then, you know, and then the route does uh include a lot of New York, you know? So I think they're coming in sort of the south uh west corner, you know, but on the south border is actually where they cross. Because they tried to cross at a different location, that's where they go encounter the bridge. So they're following, they assume they're following the same exact route that they did last time. They would be stupid if they didn't, you know, so.
As long as they know which bridge that was.
Yeah, I know. So, yeah, so there, you know, so uh the contractor was, you know, informed that it was gonna be, you know, a week from this Friday, cuz he has to schedule his crane and all that kind of stuff, so. So that's what he mentioned. So then, uh, as I mentioned, he is ready to, you know, he's been sitting around for, you know, good five months just waiting to do the work. So he's ready to, you know, jump into this project and and do it. Uh, so he just make sure he has his uh subs lined up. He didn't move ahead with the, like, some of the painting of the interior block walls. And I don't know if you noticed it, you know, I I saw it when it was on TV when the um, you know, the legislators were there and stuff. You know, the plastic hanging on the walls, cuz he painted the walls and then he put that plastic up there to protect it and all that kind of stuff. So he has gone ahead and trying to do, even after, you know, the before the vessel, you know, got, you know, damaged initially, he was doing a lot to be ready. And then, you know, then in the, you know, a month and a half after that, he even did a little bit more work trying to push it along, doing as much as he could, you know, and and he's you know, I think he's in a good, pretty good spot right now, you know, so hopefully everybody's lined up and they're ready to go and it'll get
Can you please share when we do the rigging?
Oh, yeah. Oh, send it to an email out, yeah.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Yeah.
So so Peter, what what was the outcome of this lack of fusion uh comment in the inspection report?
Yeah, so the lack of fusion, so they uh, so there's lack of fusion in 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 the well that, you know, near the damage. Uh, they did not determine the amount of lack of fusion on that. And so they can, they can do a test and determine, you know,
It's there.
The, yeah, they can determine the amount that it's there. Um, it does still pass ASME specs. And we are working with uh that third party and they said, yeah, it does pass it. You know, but it has that lack of fusion. So what we're looking at doing is um is, you know, doing that. So team recommended doing an additional pressure test on it. Um, and then we're recommending doing that onsite. Um, because then the vessel's not gonna be, you know, so some, if somebody did the test at the plant, say, and then now you're shipping it and now you're, you know, picking it up and all this kind of stuff and the, you know, vessel could move it, somebody could say, well, you know, it could have been got damaged during this, you know, during that movement. So if we're testing it when it's in its final location, we feel that it's the best location to test it at. Um, team said, if it passes the um hydrostatic test, then that is, you know, of a great determination that the weld is, you know, okay. They have um told us in other instances that, you know, so they, they monitor tanks all the time. And there are vessels that have um, you know, welds that, you know, have that lack of fusion or other defects in it, and they constantly monitor those. And then sometimes they say, they just don't, you know, we just keep looking at them every year and they don't change. Um, you know, that's, you know, that's not a guarantee that, you know, that something's not gonna happen to this one, but they, you know, they did say that. And um, and we asked them about repairs on um seams if they do get damaged. And they said, yep, we can do repairs onsite and they're done all the time. So so that, you know, that, you know, is not an issue that it have, that vessel would have to go back to a manufacturer and plant or something like they get to get fixed. So um, so what we're also looking at uh proposing is to, once the vessel is uh put into place along with doing that additional hydrostatic test, we're looking at doing a phased array test of that weld. And so we'll be doing the phased array on that at the, you know, final location of the vessel. We'll be doing it with the coating on there. Um, that's is, this is all, you know, the other way you could have done it is back at the, at the manufacturing plant without the coating on there and that type of thing. So then what we can do is, so now if we do that test uh when it's in place at the plant before goes online, now we have a baseline of exactly what that weld is. Uh, nobody can say that it got dam, you know, that uh condition of the weld changed during shipment or anything. And then uh we're getting a five-year maintenance bond from the manufacturer. So at the um carbon change that's in that fourth year, you know, while the vessel is empty, then we go back in there, do a phased array, you know, check of that weld. And then, you know, compare it to the baseline that we had at the initial. And if there's any, you know, anything that needs to be done, now we have the maintenance bond to take care of that.
So you proposed that to Evoqua?
Uh, well, they gave us the maintenance bond, so then the, you know, so because the vessel passes ASME, it, you know, we think it's tough to, you know, have them, you know, pay for that phased array test. So that would probably be coming from the um, you know, from M V D. And um, you know, just the ballpark on that, uh, it's around a five thousand dollars to have the person come out and do that work. Um, they said that the initial baseline one, you know, because the vessel's getting delivered, you know, they they know it's getting delivered in the next couple of weeks. They are already planning to come to New England to do some other tests. So they're gonna be out here anyway, so it might be a little bit less. But, you know, whatever, it's four to five, you know, thousand dollars, you know, to do that check.
And they've agreed to um if there's a, if there's a deficiency that we find that that's covered in the warranty, basically, you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. And then uh just to give you a little bit more background of some of the stuff, I know we talked about this earlier. Um, so when they, when they spec out, um, or they they calculating what they need for thickness of material and that type of stuff for the vessel, they use a three point five um safety factor on that. Um, they all, um, there's vessels also rated for seventy-five PSI. And I did look through our calculations. And um, the vessel is gonna be seeing between twenty-two and thirty PSI. And the thirty PSI is on the inlet side of the G A C. When uh there's a maximum head loss across the green sand, so that's when you need to, you know, do, you know, if you get, you know, higher than a nine PSI head loss across it, that's when you need to do something. So your vessel is gonna be seeing around thirty PSI. It passed. You know, the vessel is rated for seventy-five with the three point five, you know, multiplier on there. That's not to say that there's nothing bad with the vessel, but it's just that is a little bit, you know, of yeah, we're on the safer side, I guess, on, you know, like the pressure rating of the vessel, you know, we're not looking at operating at at, you know, seventy PSI and that type of thing, so.
The problem with lack of fusion is not the initial pressure issue. The problem is corrosion.
Yep. And then that's where we'll be. So once we, at that fourth year, when we go to to look at it, then we will be able to, you know, we're gonna be inside the tank and we can actually be, you know, visually inspecting that spot and seeing if there's anything wrong with that.
We'll be, we'll be inspecting that. Actually, all of our vessels when we do change out. So if it's yearly, that that's my plan anyways, be in there looking. See how, see how the coating is doing and all and all of that.
It's just not the experience that I have with industrial warranty cases and how these defects are being handled, but.
So they're basically not doing anything, right?
Yeah.
Again, another thing.
Yeah.
Wow.
I guess we have to think about the next time we have a plant.
In the next lifetime.
Double plant. That's, it's not satisfactory by any means, but
No.
Swatted on the bridge at this point.
They kinda have us over a barrel, so it's heated.
Right, more than ever. On that note, did anybody um have a plan? I know we talked to Keith about this, maybe he's doing it. I don't know if you mentioned to you, but the fact that we're going to be purchasing water and um at a cost to us, and if those vessels were not damaged and they were up and running today as they were supposed to be by now, a lot of these costs, we wouldn't be incurring. Did that message get communicated to our friends out of Evoqua? Because I think it's important that it does. Or maybe we write a letter. I don't know.
Well, I think this is a conversation we need to have in a non-meeting with legal.
Yeah. Just to make them aware that we're incurring costs now that we didn't know back when we had discussed with them. And now because of their delay, we're incurring costs that we we wouldn't have to incur as much cost or maybe any if the vessel was not damaged and was in place right now. So that I think they they definitely need to know that.
Yeah, um, yeah, we did have not done anything since the uh the meeting last Thursday.
Do we want Underwood not to discuss that with them or?
Who would have a conversation with legal first?
All right. I mean, I think if you're gonna say something like that, you gotta have a law, right? I mean, to just tell them that without asking for something, you know, they're gonna be great, but you know, I I understand your desire to kind of to tell them, Don, but what what are you asking them for? I don't know. But is there really nothing we need from them at this point, except an undamaged tank? Which, which is expected to be here in a week or two. Peak and a half.
Do you know how much, how much uh is left to pay for towards that vessel?
Yeah, we have a lot and it's um but once they deliver it, then then um we release. I think we're, once they deliver it, the only thing we have left is um I think it's twenty-five, that, I mean, twenty-five percent. And once they put the G A C into it, I believe that's ten percent. And then the final fifteen, we hold until everything started up and we have the O and M manuals. I don't know the dollar values on that, but that's about the percentages. Do you want me to look that up?
Um, not right, not right now.
I wouldn't do this.
No.
I should need, we should be speaking with this.
Yeah.
This, this is not a conversation.
All right, let's uh, we're an hour plus behind schedule right now, so let's in, in that respect and uh kind of going off track here, I guess, now, but anyways. Um, I guess that was all, that was all that was on the agenda for you. I don't know if there's any other questions that you guys have for Pete. Is there anything else missing that I missed here?
No.
I don't think so, right?
No.
All right. Good. Anything else, Peter, or?
Oh, that's all I had, yeah.
You don't need any decisions or anything from us to on any items, right?
No, the big one was that bid item number two for um for well two nine, yeah.
Yeah.
I I might have one. I wanted to bring it up on the old business, but it might be something where Peter could help if you don't mind. Um, the noise complaint on the Turkey Hill booster station.
Oh, it's actually different. It's a Tim pulse is the
Okay. Can we, let's keep this short in the in the interest of time. Can we get an update on the next, at the next meeting?
I I can give you real quick if you want, um. We've been a little bit behind. We put the foam, there's some foam around the edges. I got, talked to uh Dave and and Jim, who is the foreman. So let's finish that up, get some skirting on there. Get some more sampling, uh uh noise sampling. And it, in my opinion, that would be the end of it, cuz it's really not much more we can do, but we're we're just about there. I don't have any further readings, but.
So you have more to follow up on after you do that?
Absolutely.
And we're still communicating with the homeowner?
I did see her the other night, yes, but um I will.
Okay.
I will follow up with her as well, let her know we're gonna finish it up.
Okay, thank you.
Good. All right.
So on my point, on my point of my action items, um um, I'll I'll double check on for well number two, if the vessels are gonna be delivered, you know, all at once or, you know, two and two. Um, I'll check with uh our electrical engineer on the VFDs for well nine to make sure that a larger one is no problem. And then I'll do the change order for Kinsman uh for bid item number two.
Yeah, that's all I can think of. All right, awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night, too.
Thanks.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
All right, let's see if we can whip through these real quick. Um, border commissioners to vote regarding the request of Richard Bowles for a waiver of connection fee was tabled from. September twenty, from the last meeting. So update on that. He's actually going to. Paul was actually gonna put him on the agenda for a board meeting to request that they pay for that. So there's really no action.
But town hall board meeting.
Yes. What are you on the agenda for, for the council to vote on? I got the class for that. All right, so, um.
So we'll wait for that vote.
The town, you want? Your vote is why, so we don't need an action. But I bet you the town, the town's gonna wanna know what, where we stand on it, right? So I think we were, if I remember, we were thinking of not allowing him that waiver. For several different reasons, such as none of his water is actually. Uh, his water is completely compliant with the MCLs. And, um, isn't it even non-detecting? Yeah, right. I think the only detectable ones are the non-regulated compounds or something.
Yeah. I think he had none actually.
I think he had five parts or something like that with. Was it? Yeah, I think everything else was non-detect.
I mean, the argument has been unfortunately that. He has PF, PF HXA in like three. Then. It's kind of hard to read PFP EA OA, I'm not sure. Three point seven six and PF BA at five point six four. None of which are regulated, is it? No, I'm sorry, this is. Oh, no, yeah, for West Road, is that what it was? Yeah, so that's his report, yeah. So. Yeah, the highest one is PFBA with. If I read this right, five point six four.
If I'm reading between the lines, if he reject his waiver for connection fee, it probably. Is more of a hardship on him to bring to the town and say. MBD denied this, so can I get assistance from some other vehicle? I think is what I'm reading between the lines. And, and I know I'm, I'm reluctant to grant him that waiver because of. Setting a precedent for other people coming in, asking the same thing. And, and I know somebody at DES told him. He may have a wave of PFAS coming at him in the future. It may or may not happen, but it's all kind of conjecture at this point, so. If he's coming to us with a clear violation. I, I don't even know if that would be different, because then I would say, well, then the polluter's got some responsibility.
Right.
You know.
Yeah, I think we agreed on that last time, too.
Yeah. So I don't know if anybody else has anything more to talk about, uh, we can, we can, um. Make a motion on this and then discuss it as well, but, you know, trying to move things along tonight.
I'll make a motion to turn that down with, uh. Regret. I mean, we, I would love to, but it's just, it, it's not fair to the other eight payers and it's a precedent. And, and like I said in, in the prior meeting, we're probably the least involved party and this the least responsible party. So I would, I, I make a motion to vote it down.
Second that. Right, motion by Wolf, second by Paul. Any other last minute comments, questions? All right, uh, do a roll call. Wolf, how do you vote?
I guess that means I would in favor, right? Because I wanna, I want the motion to pass. Yeah, so, yeah, so, oh, uh, yes, I would in favor.
Favor, Paul, vote I. Uh, John?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Myself, I, so that's five zero zero. All right, uh, next item is a, um, board of commissioners to discuss a request of Carmel Bichard to waive a late charge.
Yeah, so she came into the office and, um. Talked to Amy and wasn't satisfied and asked for manager. I came up, talked to her and we explained, um. Well, she said she was to check out on the eighth and mailed it for the tenth, and that, um, we received it plenty of time, which. Mail doesn't work that way, um. So we received payment on the fifteenth and everything's processed same day, so, um, she. Said that she was not happy with that, right? So that she could write a letter to the board if she chose, so. First word is not.
Not paying this late charge.
Late charge, you receive the payment well before the due date, see, he charged. So she was not happy with the answer we gave her. Uh, we went back and looked at it, and they had to review it, had if she had not had a way, um, a late fee waived before. Then we could do that, just as a courtesy, but she has had late fee waived before, so, um. And obviously, then I put the bylaw in there too, that says that we can only forgive, um, late charge once. So this is all the backups that were to review.
So the date that it's received here is considered the date it gets here, not necessarily the date that it's postmarked or anything like that?
No.
I guess if everybody was delayed in the mail, then it could be issues that develop that way. If, if what she's saying is correct, I'm not sure, you know what I mean? So was it say payment received nine fifteen? Is that what you had written in here?
Yeah.
And the check was written on the eighth?
Yep.
So that was seven days.
I'll say this, I was in the exact same situation the other day and my wife asked me, should we pay the late charge? And I said. Commissioner, I have to. But no, frankly, I mean. I mean, I hear that postage could be something that we look at, but that means now we. The envelope together with the.
I know, that's why.
It gets really complicated real quick and, and it's not the process we do, right? So.
Right, and the thing is, is like, um. The mail is sent from here, it goes to Manchester and comes back, so it's like it's just being internally done and.
I mean, it's like a credit card or a mortgage. I would take in the postage time if we didn't have any other means to pay a bill.
Right.
It's Paul, you could drive it, there's a drop box at the front door.
Right.
I mean.
That's true.
As commissioner, I'm saying I've. Paid late charges too, I mean.
Shame on you.
Exactly, right? I think I got a late charge due right now.
I've done the same thing. And I'm right here.
And it was granted before and the bylaws is.
One time.
Any forgiveness of a carrying charge shall be on a one-time basis after first forgiveness. It is the customer's responsibility to ensure that the payment is mailed in time to be received by MBD owner before. The due date shown on the bill. Couldn't be any clearer than that.
And we did waive it one time before, so, I mean, just kind of a lot of options.
Arrangements shall be made by the customer with their financial disposition to make electronic payments. It's efficient time to be credited by the district owner before the date shown on the bill, either way.
You know, MBD shouldn't necessarily have to be burdened if. I was talking, it, it, we're not saying that it was even a delay anyway, so. I, I guess if it's consistent with all the other bills that are paid by mail too, you know, credit cards, mortgage.
But away the, the policy is written, she has already been given.
Yeah.
That one time, so.
Yeah. All right, do we need a motion on this then? Might as well, I guess. To, um.
Motion to reject the request, is that how we would word it?
Right.
Motion to reject the request. To waive a late charge. Due to. MBD forgiveness of carrying charges policy, number oh eight dash oh one dash B.
Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Motion by Wolf, second by Paul. Any other last comments on this? Seeing none, we'll call a motion. Wolf, you vote.
In favor.
Favor of the motion. Paul, or vote I. John?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Myself, I, five zero zero. So that motion passes. Um, next item, board of commissioners to discuss a recent visit of EPA administrator Mike Regan and Congress representatives. Chris Pappas and Annie Custer. This was at Wells seven and eight, uh, last week. And, um. I don't think there's anything, I don't know if there's something in the packet or Wolf, if you wanna talk about this, I know you had some.
I think the event was very good, right, for, for the purpose, for the cause of PFAS. Regulation and the impacts that PFAS has on communities, um, and I greatly appreciate any, any support that has been shown to MBD. I guess. What I would like to see though is. And I'm not saying this because of any party affiliation or any other offices that I or others in the room may or may not. Have, I'm saying this, we have always made a point of MBD being apolitical, no different than the town council is, no different than the school board is. And I would like us to continue to be apolitical. And I think in the past, we have been going through great strides to ensure that. You know, members of the public and representatives of, you know, elected officials of both parties have been invited to events. Uh, even if they ended up not showing up and it still ended up only being one party present, but, uh, I, I did not agree with. With, with how the event ended up, you know, being perceived and. Um, while I greatly appreciate the support that has been shown and, 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 and. You know, I, I support these representatives personally in their, in their quest for helping the public and, and, and. Have a helping communities with the PFAS burden. Uh, I also believe that we need to be better in control in the future of. Who gets nominated to become additional invitees? I think that's the part that's set the, the least positive with me. I did not feel that we really knew who's gonna end up coming at the end of this event. It turned, we, we lost control of the event and I, I didn't like that. That's really the biggest issue that I have with it. If an event is being held on MBD property, I think we should be in control. Of that, or, no, we should not be in control, but we should be informed. Of anybody that is officially invited and representing any, anybody on, on, on MBD property. If that's, if that ends up being one party or the other, I'm perfectly fine with that. But we should, it should not be the snowball effect where things just develop and, and we don't even know about it. I did not, I don't think that that's what it should be. So I wanna throw this out and we can postpone this discussion to another day, because I know there's a short notice. We can think about this and have an agenda item on, on, on a future meeting. But I personally would like to see a public event policy. Where we basically say, this is, you know, the position of the MBD being an apolitical organization. If public events occur on MBD property, uh, under MBD flag. Um, we should be, uh, you know, we're obligating ourselves and our guests to invite. You know, across the board, cross-party, across the aisle. Uh, I also think that the policy should say that, um. Elected officials or, you know, public figures should be announced to MBD prior to the event. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure if we need to approve it, but at least it should be announced. And I think that's, that's out of respect for MBD, honestly. So that's the suggestion, that's a request to maybe ask for your agreement to put that on a future meeting on the agenda. Think about it, go on, talk about it next month.
Right, so maybe we can follow up and see if we have thoughts about it at the next meeting. If we wanna move forward with something more formal. Does that sound reasonable to you? Is that what you're asking us?
I'm, I'm fine with that, but I don't wanna force the board to do something that's only important to me, so I would like to have at least three commissioners agree with that.
I know I was.
Maybe it's just something that only bothers me, but then, then we can.
I, I guess part of my thing is, I, I knew. Obviously, but Chris Pappas, but, uh, I had no idea Annie Custer, I, I have never seen her be anything in. Involved specifically with Meramec. I mean, I mean, Shaheen. I, I know she's come to, you know, many times to the town hall and stuff, you know, and helped out, but, um. I'll be honest with you, Annie Custer, I never heard her or anything regarding, uh, uh, like the PFAS situation, so, uh, I. I, I guess, did, was originally supposed to be just Chris Pappas and then, and the gentleman from the EPA, or did it just. Then all some other people came, I just, I didn't.
So I can speak to that because, uh, originally Chris Pappas's office contacted us, contacted Don first and contacted me and I said.
You know, more logistical things about planning something like that, should go through Jill and Ron, so he called and. Continued the process with you guys.
Yeah, so I had sent out a email letting you know that, um, Chris Pappas would be there, Annie Custer's gonna be there, but she's seepost.
Yeah.
So, um. And then the EPA administrator and then. Lorene Allen and Rosemary Rong and us. That's what was told. Um, my understanding is that Pappas's office and Custer's office invited additional people. So.
Okay.
They had their people there, plus there was a lot of, um, each politician had like two or three staff members with them too. So when we got set up, um. We had, they had set up the roundtable, they said it was gonna be a roundtable discussion, well, I didn't know it was gonna be led by Annie Custer, it was supposed to be the EPA administrator. So they kind of, what they said is, we don't, we don't wanna bother you, we don't, we just, I need a location, you know, and this is Pappas's office saying, this is, um. This is where we're gonna, what we'd like to do. They went and looked at four and five and thought seven and eight would be better because they had. Cause we had issues with that and it's still in construction and they want to, you know, talk about those things and struggles. So, um, once. We had gone off with the security people, they did a security check beforehand, um. And he said, I'll get all the chairs the morning before the event at seven thirty in the morning. The EPA person called me and said, I can't get my hands on tables and chairs, which they were supposed to take care of. So we worked with Paul McCallie, um, he got things done, we got, um, their conference room table broken down. I, the guys were, most of the guys were on a break, the other three guys came and girl. Came and loaded up all the tables and chairs, brought them back to the MBD at the end of the day, so that they could just drive them all first thing in the morning and set them up. They got them set up, people just started filing in and that's all they.
Right, and it. And, and I, you know, I, I recognize that, you know, my, my feedback on that may have been perceived as, as criticism to staff, that was not the intention, the, the. You, you know, we ended up having a round table that had, you know, state representatives on there that had, uh, town managers on there. Town managers from, from another neighboring town that's also affected by the situation. And it ended up being a round table with, what was it, six, seven, eight officials, you know, that. I personally was not informed, right? And I believe you guys weren't either, right? And, and again, MBD. Is, isn't, is, is, is an organization, is an entity, it's a town, and while it's not a town, but it's, 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 it's a municipality, right? Um, and, and. I just really don't wanna be in that position where I'm being, as a commissioner, being, being looked at by one party or another as, as a. As either a, a stage, right? Um, where MBD is being seen as a stage, nor where, where us as individuals nor the organization is being seen as, as partisan. I don't want that. Cause in fact, let's look at it, let's look at the legislation that's right now in Concord, we need actually bipartisan support. Right, we need that across the board. And I'm not saying that we can't agree to one party or another, you know, holding an event at MBD. I think that's okay. Right? But I think it's only okay if at the same time we tell the other party as well. Right? Maybe they wanna have an event like that too, two months down the road, right? But out of sheer courtesy and respect for all the people that are working, I mean, we have the drinking water and groundwater trust fund, right? We have. Um, I don't even wanna throw names out there, because it's just gonna be seen as partisanship. That's not my point. My point is, I don't wanna have partisanship. I want this to be as apolitical as the school board is, as the town councils. And I wanna be seen as apolitical. In my role here, I don't wanna be seen political. And for that, I think we need to have better control about these meetings in the future. That's. And again, I might be the only one seeing a problem there and we can vote this, you know, off the, off the agenda and we're done here, but, um, I wanted to bring that forth.
I, I. I agree with you, but it sounds like if this event started off one way and it went another way. It was supposed to be small and it, and they put a lot of burden on you guys. You had to do a lot of work. For them.
Correct.
So. You know, it's like, do we bill them for for the salary for the day, you know what I mean?
But if the policy can come into play, right, if if a request comes in like that, we can say, sure, here's our policy.
Yeah.
Right, the other party can read that. And we can agree to that event as long as the policy is being, you know, guided by. Right, I, that's why I'm thinking, having something formal in place that that we where we define the frame conditions of such an event and the expectations that we have as the host of that event. Is is giving us a little bit of leverage.
We also, and ask them, whoever wants to have have a clearly defined. Who, what they want done, so it's. It's, it's no surprises.
Right.
So I was surprised that, I didn't know I was gonna be at the table, I didn't know I was gonna speak either, but I got to the table, I saw my name tag, so I sat down and then. Congressman Custer passed the microphone to me, so I said, all right, I'm gonna speak. I kind of had something in my mind planned anyways, just even in discussion with people, so.
Yeah.
That didn't bother me, um, I wasn't bothered by. Which political team was there because quite frankly. It goes both ways, whoever's gonna be in power is gonna be the ones that are gonna be there, so. The thing I don't want to have happen is to have this onerous procedure in place where it burdens the staff more. They have to follow up with who's doing what, who's saying, you know, are you getting to the point where. You have to send the speech over and that has to be reviewed to by by MBD, you know, make sure they're not saying anything. Uh, one-sided politically, I mean, this is getting. But at the same time, I'm happy have to have the publicity. Of MBD being on WMUR.
Yeah.
That we're in a financial. You know, burden with the PFAS issue, so. I don't want to have something in place that puts a burden on the staff and makes it. Less attractive to have. Things like that happen in the future. So, you know, it's 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 a fine line and I don't know what the right answer is, but I I wasn't as bothered by it. I I was probably more bothered by not knowing that. Who was gonna be there and who was gonna be speaking and who wasn't. That that maybe having a list of, you know, who's gonna be at the table, who's gonna speak, that type of thing would be interesting, but.
And then what kind of, what kind of involvement are you expecting?
Right, right, but but, you know. I think it's important for MBD to be able to have the venue available for these things. And I I just worried that. Do I, do I feel a little bit used? Politically for maybe, but at the same time. That's a trade-off that we we have a balance with for getting publicity on MBD too, so.
Well.
And and maybe you don't like that trade-off, but it doesn't bother me personally.
Oh, my concern, my concern is alienating those that haven't been contacted to be part of the table. That's my concern. How do we really adapt?
Yeah.
And the party in power right now in New Hampshire is is not that party.
At the different, at the state, though, it goes the other way, it's happening the other way too, though, that things are happening. On one party is in power at the State House. And the other party's not getting invited.
What's the purpose of?
It happens all around, it's just the nature of the beast.
Was this uh the purpose of regarding at the federal level of?
Yeah, talking about, and that's where the uh American Recovery Plan came up and all that stuff. No, so that's where it got. I guess that was the the part that was viewed as being politically partisan. But just the fact that our representatives to Washington are from one party, I don't know who else we could have invited to balance them out on the other party, so. That's what I'm saying, you know, in two years from now, it might be the other way, you never know, so.
Right.
I I don't know, I I don't think I'd be in favor of making a whole. Extra burden on the staff to come up with a policy unless someone wants to spear edit.
No, I would, I would. I wouldn't want less burden, we're not a party rental company, Jill has things to do.
Oh, yeah.
Has a lot of things to do. I mean, I honestly don't care who's coming here, but you need to bring your own stuff. You know what I mean, like? It's not what we do, we're a village district, we're supplying water and we have a lot of other things going on.
Right.
You want a photo op, fine, you got buildings, but you need to plan it and then come to us and say, hey, can we? Or if you want to tour, say, hey, you got tables? Come on.
Yeah.
You know? That's, that's what.
That's a good point.
I I do see the Wolf's point, though, that I, I mean, I guess I could see. Maybe something that says, we need a full list of attendees or they're not gonna be admitted, or or something like that, because it. It does sound like it got hijacked at the end a little bit.
Yeah, right.
There are people that weren't invited to, or actually they weren't invited, we weren't aware that they were gonna be invited.
And and I felt bad that it started with me and I put them off on you guys and then end up blowing up into this monstrosity.
I'll give you. I'll give you an extreme example, okay, all right, I didn't want to have this discussion necessarily tonight, but we're in the middle of it. I'll give you an extreme example, that's the same, let's assume Party A. Asks. High-profile visits. Party A gets the stellar idea of asking. Let me come up with something, um. Let's say Shell, the Shell executive is being invited. To show how great Shell. Let it be BP, let it be Sanoco, right, I don't want to use other names of other. Chemical and industrial companies in the, in in, right? Okay, so so we have a put a party that comes up with the glories of the idea of bringing somebody to this event. That we really don't want to have bragging about how great they are dealing with. Local, you know, water suppliers. And we're not in control of that at all because we have no policy. That really would seriously tick me off. Right? That's, I know that's an extreme case, right? But I mean, th- there's a lot of political. Potential, right, a lot of political ground here. That this water entity is covering, we see it every day, I mean, we're talking to all the state trips all the time, you know, we're talking, we're talking to uh to the, to um. To DS, uh, you know, that it certainly has a little political flavor as well, right, we. There there's always a little bit something political about all of that. I don't want to be in a position where I'm suddenly reading the next morning that, uh, you know, um. You know, a a a local. Chemical supplier. All of a sudden showed up at MBD together with uh with uh with uh with an official and and had a photo op at uh Wells seven and eight and. Or Wells four and five for crying out loud, right, and how awesome everything has been handled. I'd have a real problem with that.
Yeah, I would too.
And I want to be in control of that, that's that's all I'm saying. So that hasn't, that doesn't, it doesn't have to be a big policy, the policy can be a two, two-sentence kind of thing, right? MBD needs to be held. Oppressed of uh any. Invitees. Right? And MBD can't have, let's say, any logistical efforts as far as like, uh, you know, whatever se- security, I don't know. It's probably more than two lines, right, and we need to think a little about it, but. I don't think this example is 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 too crazy actually at all, you know, I mean, this is very possible, the more this gets into the courts and. Maybe one day there's a, there's a, there's a civil lawsuit with the jury, right? And it's all about publicity. We don't know which way this is gonna go. I would love to have a policy to keep ourselves in control.
There's probably more chance we're gonna have more of these in the future too.
That's right.
So, that's a good point. All right.
Something as simple as having a list of people.
Yeah.
What you plan on doing.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be elaborate, I just want to make sure that there's no such surprise.
If you think, you know, that that's important, I I can see the importance to that. Again, I. With a million other things going on, I don't want to put more burden on the staff that. You know, but. So I'm not sure how to make this policy come about without. Having more burden on the staff, and how much burden you're talking about.
But it it kind of. It, and you don't want to have a big policy, but also it will help them prevent them having burden. Going around looking for tables in the future.
Right.
You know, so.
Maybe have a list of, you know, who's coming. What are they, what do you need, are you bringing all this stuff?
What's the agenda?
Right. I don't know about charging fees for time and 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 equipment, but um.
No, but liability, for example, indemnification.
It's it's liability, it's our property, right, so.
Well, if anybody gets hurt on property, it's our, it's actually our liability, if somebody trips over the, trips into a pit or trips over a trail.
Especially at constructions.
So, right, so indemnification clause right there, right, I mean. And frankly, I'm pretty sure if we ask one of our legal representatives to write up a visitor policy, they're gonna do that, they probably have one already.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Because I know like to rent Wasserman. Uh, Function Hall, you have to sign a waiver and all that stuff, so, you know, should have something like that, maybe. Yeah. So there's there's utility to what you're saying. You know? Just not sure how um we get, that's like on the list of priority, I'm sorry, but it's just.
And that's fine, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, you know, maybe it's something that's that's for next year, I just don't want to lose control over there all the time. It's not gonna get easier.
At least at this point. And I think this was a learning curve for everyone, so the next time someone calls. We know the questions now to ask, I think, about, you know, all right, who's coming, who's providing this, who's doing this? So maybe, maybe just knowing that, maybe even writing a list of things for now to. To make sure we're aware of or something, you know, maybe that's how this policy starts, it's just.
I'll be happy to send you a couple of thoughts too.
Do we want to make it an action item, just so that it doesn't get lost, or?
I think so, I guess, it sounds like if, you know, I. I I don't know if John has any way in on, but it sounds like four of us here in the room think that it's something that should be. Addressed probably in some kind of.
I just, I just think, oh, if we, let this make next time easier and everybody on the same page.
Yeah, yeah. I can see that. Yeah, I I think we're all in agreement on that then. All right, so an action item. You get that, Amanda? I don't know who that would be in charge of, but. Usually have someone on the action item.
Since I triggered it, I'll be happy to send you a couple of bullet points that I can think of and and, you know. I'm pretty sure, actually, we have a visitor policy at my employee, I can see if I can pick something out there and ask, ask approval to get that.
We still want it on the agenda for next, or see where we're at?
Maybe review, once, once it's there, we don't have to put it on the agenda, we can start working on the draft and when it's ready to review, then put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I think if it's an action item, then we just kind of revisit those at every meeting anyways, probably like we're gonna do in a couple of minutes now anyway, so. All right, everybody good, we'll move on.
Only took twenty minutes. Thank you.
All right, so now we're in the minutes, so um we'll start with the first one here, which is uh. June twenty-first. Um, public hearing.
Minutes. That was one page of the.
Page.
Both.
Simple one page.
Yep.
So let's do these one at a time, so, because we might have corrections on other ones, so um. Anybody have any uh corrections on this, I don't have anything on this one. So if we want to make a motion to approve.
Approved.
Seconded. Uh, motion to approve the minutes of. September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, public hearing.
June twenty-first.
Yeah. The upside down, six is a nine, all right, so June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. That was made by Wolf, seconded by Ken. Uh, we'll do a roll call. Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
Ken?
In favor.
John?
Aye.
Paul?
Standing.
Paul's standing, I'm in favor, so that's four zero one. All right, so we'll move on now to uh the next one in the packet is July twenty-first, regular meeting minutes. And anybody have any corrections to offer up on that?
Nope. Move to approve.
Motion by John to approve, second by Wolf. Roll call, John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Wolf, in favor? Paul? I. Ken? I. Myself, I, so the the minutes of June, sorry, July twenty-first, regular session. Are approved. Uh, the next ones we have here, September twenty. Uh, regular session, meeting minutes.
I have a small edit or more question on page five. Line. Eighteen. Uh, he also informed the board members that he met with someone. To discuss signage in the wellhead protection area. That's you. I think we should define who someone is.
Yes, it probably was Kyle, yeah.
I think it was Kyle too, so if we make that edit, I'm pretty sure it was. Kyle as well.
Kyle Fox.
Yeah, I think so.
You get that, Amanda, Kyle Fox, you can substitute, are you making the edits, Jill?
Jill makes them.
Okay.
And it might be fair to Kyle Fox to go back to the recording and verify that. Yeah, unless you remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna. Right, so um, any other corrections on that one?
Nope.
Right, so someone can make a motion to approve the minutes. For September twenty as amended.
The move.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by John, roll call, vote, uh, Wolf, how do you vote?
In favor.
John?
Aye.
Paul? Standing. Ken?
I'm staying.
Oh, that's a good point.
And I am in favor, so that's three zero two. Okay, so now we're on to the. Uh, the special meeting of September twenty-seventh. Um, and I don't think I got a copy of the draft on this one, so the only. So what I see. Repeated is Cabot preserves, has a S on the end of it. Is it actually just Cabot preserve, I think? Plural, I mean singular instead of plural?
Yeah.
And so just do a search and replace, because it's probably about ten or fifteen places that that's. Written in there that I found, um. Let me just see if this.
I actually Googled that to make sure that I had it right. So I think it might actually have an S at the end.
Is that right?
All right, I'll double check.
Google isn't always right, but that's what came up in my search.
Sometimes DES names things differently than they're named otherwise too, so I would check it on DES.
All right, so the only other thing I wanted to um add here is on page um. Let me see where I am here. Page three of six. Line thirty-one. Well, let's start on thirty, it says, he stated that he does not want to commit to a. Sixty-four thousand dollar cost for the next eight months. I think. That was a sixty-four thousand dollar monthly cost. Which is quite a bit different. I think that's what I was. Referring to, because we were talking about. I think the monthly charges on that. So if you can make uh that correction. And I think those are the only ones I had, just make sure. That's the last minutes, right? Uh, anybody want to make a motion to prove those as amended?
Second.
Motion by Paul, second by Wolf, do roll call, Paul, how do you vote?
How about I?
Uh, Wolf?
In favor.
Um, John?
Aye.
And yes, and myself in favor, that's five zero zero. And uh, we're moving on to action items. So, get through these. Uh, item number two, I think that's a recurring thing.
Yep.
That should probably be coming up. Does that do maybe at the next meeting, you think, or trying to think when that was?
I'll have to go back and look at the board packets.
All right, that's good enough. Uh, let's see, number thirteen, templates for disaster recovery policy and data retention and security policy. What what did we just have sent out to us? Last week? Was.
Emergency policy, um, the cybersecurity, final cybersecurity policy. That's incorporated into.
I think this is, I think this is, yeah, it's all in the emergency plan, it has, it should have. Disaster recovery in there. As well as uh data retouching. In security, it should all be within that.
That was all approved to by. Our next. Yeah.
So is this um. In a sufficient place that we can um. Take this off the list then?
So, yeah.
I know we haven't, we haven't reviewed them, but I don't know if we were planning on reviewing them, like board commissioner at the meetings, I don't know. At at least they're done, so maybe we can.
Michelle set them out a couple of times for everybody to keep you in the loop when changes were being made.
Okay.
Well, we, we should probably put it on the agenda because people want to maybe, not that it's likely, but people maybe want to be aware of us approving them. You know, I mean, it's, it's customer data too, right, for example.
Maybe just give us the overview of it, you know, at the next meeting, instead of going through, you know, page by page, because it's pretty likely documents and whatnot.
Yeah, just a quick, the key points.
Alright, so let's leave this on here and let's actually make a plan to um make this an agenda item for the next meeting.
And, and even if we just approve it, right, with, with everybody reading it prior.
How about a summary of these as the agenda item?
Yeah.
So that, you know, Michelle doesn't feel compelled to go through page by page.
I just don't want to vote on, on it without a prior notice.
Right, I don't know that this requires us to vote on it though. I think it's already done.
Okay, okay.
But maybe just to review it.
But if, yeah, but obviously if you have thoughts, something needs to be changed or should.
It looked pretty good when I read it, but it's been a while.
Right.
I thought that all these policies need to be board approved, okay.
Alright, so we'll want to leave thirteen there until we discuss it next, next month. Um, next item twenty three, uh, results of the PFAS sample points in the distribution system, you know, that's on a quarterly basis.
We're actually sampling uh Thursday, maybe I'll sample it.
Alright, so if those are, are available by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's a repeated item, so that's gonna stay on there. So if they're available at the next meeting, then we can discuss it.
Yep.
Probably under your superintendent's report would be a good topic. Number twenty four, Underwood to look into cost of service study. Think they've already done that. And we, we approved.
Process, I don't know if they've actually, I think they start uh Pentrick should have started it, but.
Right. So I think we can take that off the act, active agenda items, is that, you guys feel okay with that?
Yeah.
Because it's, it's underway, right, so. Okay, number thirty seven, uh, decision for um, criteria for moving forward with alternative water sources. Yeah, I, I think that's kind of got to stay on there and
Yeah, I agree with that.
At some point, we're gonna have to make some decisions and I don't know when that is, but uh, thirty nine, an agenda item to upcoming meeting to discuss noise complaint around the Turkey Hill Booster.
And we kind of talked about that already today.
Right, do we want to leave that on until it's resolved? Yeah. Something like we're close to having it resolved. Right. Uh, number forty, Wells, four and five open house, I think we've agreed to probably forego that. I think at the last meeting we had, we talked about that.
We had said we're gonna do a combined one in spring when seven and eight is finished and who knows, maybe two and three, well, nine and three, maybe also finished.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, maybe when they're all done.
Alright. Do we want to leave that on or just take it off then?
I'd leave it on, but maybe say it's tabled, tabled until spring.
Okay. Number forty one, the review process of water allocation from the planning board and MBD's ability to monitor. Yeah, so that, that needs to stay on because we haven't addressed that and I think we talked about a work session. And then got sidetracked with a couple of other pressing issues. So let's keep forty one on there, forty two. Uh, I think we just completed that tonight, right, so um, we can take that one off the list. And then the ongoing salt mitigation committee meetings, I think that probably stays on as a
Yep.
A reminder. Um, are we um?
Two new ones. Just as a reminder, right, we have two new ones to press release with.
Yeah, well, you have Amanda, tell us what you got for the new ones.
For new action items, I have um, advertising fidelity's and best um, involvement with salt mitigation. Um, understanding the permitted threshold of four and five and if they're allowed to exceed it. And then also um, addressing and understanding the future MBD events.
Okay. Okay, good. So on that salt committee meetings, I don't think we have anything officially scheduled yet at this point for another, is there one in November?
With fidelity.
Okay, good.
To follow up.
Great. Good, so uh that should do it for action items. Any uh, old business from anyone? Where does the treasurer position stand?
Michelle's talked to a couple of them.
Okay.
Maybe it, over yesterday, spoke to there's three or four candidates.
Right, I was wondering if I missed something on that or something, but um.
And currently it's still Kathy or Lynn or Kathy? Okay. Kathy Stack.
Right. So no old business, move on to new business. Anybody have any new business to bring up? John, I don't know if you want to talk about the uh Zoom meeting bill or something that you discussed with Maureen or you want to leave that for another day?
I'd be willing to spend two minutes on it.
Okay.
Dr. Maureen, she talked to the Attorney General's office, he confirmed everything that everybody's been saying. She'd be willing to sponsor Bill but can't refer me to the two senators because Senate's in session. I don't know either one of them, their names are sitting on my desk. Um, so it's possible. But um, as it is, I appreciate you guys being willing to be there in person. I prefer not to, but I guess if push came to shove, I could. Maureen suggested possibly the use of a larger venue uh, to allow for more social distancing or some social distancing uh, like the town chambers or something like that. And that's where I'm at with it. So if anybody knows a senator and agrees with me that a quorum should not require physical presence, I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Right. Okay.
I think we have two or three that we can approach, right?
It, it makes sense, I'm in favor of it, we, things were going great when everybody was doing Zoom, I think public still has access. So it seems like the law should change with the time and it's probably time to have something change.
I agree.
You know? It's, it's a physical burden sometimes with everybody working, have to be here. You know, and we, we could easily be where, wherever we are. And on that matter, I'm not going to be here next month, so here we go again, right, so.
I'm, I was gonna speak about it after, but I'm not either. Next month.
So if that leaves the three of us, so John, you might have to consider coming in if you want, you know, so right away, here's an example, right? Unfortunately. You know, you know, just, you have to tell us now, just, it looks like that's what the situation's gonna be. I'm in, I'm in South Carolina, there's nothing I can do about it. This is just a perfect example of an archaic, what I think is an archaic law that worked in our favor during COVID. And because the emergency order was lifted. Not that conditions are really any different than when the emergency order was in place. Unfortunately.
We're actually about ten times more cases than when
Good point. Yeah, so things aren't any better, I should say.
And vaccinated people are getting the disease and dying from it clearly, obviously, I mean. That wasn't my first concern, my first concern was spreading it to others, but
Right.
Yeah, I'll get the, I'll, I'll shoot the email out with the two names that Maureen gave me and, you know, we'll, we'll follow up with them and go from there, I guess.
Right. No, good. Good, it was a good thought and I, I'm with you on that, so I think, I think we should try to pursue it, you know, it's gonna make everyone's life a little bit easier here and keep our meetings flowing because you know, when you can't make decisions because you don't have a quorum in the room, but you have a quorum on Zoom. What's the difference? That, that's, doesn't make any sense. Alright, um, any other new business? I don't have anything.
We should talk about these dates that you guys aren't available because I too have at least one week that I'm not available in November and we gotta make sure.
Right.
We're aligned on that.
Does it make sense to move the meeting to, I think, to the end of the month?
Let's share the dates when people aren't available and take it from there.
Well, yeah, so it would have to be after Thanksgiving. Because I'm gone from the fifth, fifth to the twenty eighth. So the twenty ninth that week, but you're pretty much at the end of November. And there's, I think there's a way I can declare an emergency because I have that authority. But it has to be like the last minute. Still not really clear on the.
Well, it does look like November, you're gonna have a big agenda.
And we were home with a newborn and a one year old.
Yeah.
Um, it's hard to say.
You know, maybe we just declare an emergency and because we have important decisions to make and if we don't meet in November, I'm sure there's going to be pressing issues. I can guarantee it, there always is. What meeting do we have that doesn't have pressing issues? So if they're all pressing issues and I have to declare an emergency that we need to meet, then maybe that's what I gotta do. And if someone wants to call us on it, call us on it. Because the alternative is, our business doesn't get done, things get delayed, we pay more in cost. That's what our customers want, I'd be very surprised. So maybe I'll have to declare an emergency from South Carolina on the third week of, third Monday of November. Maybe we do that so we can move things along. Unless anybody has a better idea, you shouldn't spell out that you're gonna have it.
I mean, good meeting in South Carolina.
In retrospect, when was it not an emergency? On previous meetings.
Well, Kenny, do you want to fly it out to South Carolina?
Let's go.
We'll move the whole room down to South Carolina. Alright, um. So I guess the next thing is superintendent's report.
So uh, just a, just a couple of things. Our letting copper, we got results back for letting copper, everything was, was good. Letters went out on ten thirteen to people that submitted the results, so we're all aware of what their results are. The other thing I have is, or you should have, so you was the CIP. There was a request from the planning, uh, where's that? Tim Thompson.
Oh, yeah.
He's not the director. Uh, submitting the CIP. Michelle, this email, Michelle did kind of go through it. I did ask Dawn, it was I have a prior, prior engagement for tomorrow night, so I'm not gonna make the meeting. It was kind of a short notice as well. I wanted to get the, put the CIP in front of or take a look at.
Was that, where is that?
It was, it was actually handed out tonight, so.
Do I need to give the wife a heads up? Do I need to give the wife a heads up? From the planning board?
Yeah, that's right. I, I kind of think, I'd like to like have us look at this a little more detail before I try and sit in front of a
No, no, absolutely, I mean, let's take a look at it, we can, so typically.
I'm not sure we wanted to look at this tonight.
No, 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 I didn't.
Alright, alright, alright.
I know we, what we talked about it, we wanted to get in front. It's just, it's been a long night.
Sure.
Let's look at it.
Are we on the agenda for the council tomorrow night?
I think I asked to be referred, I have a prior commitment, so.
December third. Meeting in December as well.
What are we talking about right now? Is we're all over the place?
I, it's the CIP, I am calling that, so we, we um it was two years ago, last year we asked, but typically we will set our CIP, we will appear before the planning board and we let them know our projects and the planning board actually rate our, our CIP projects of importance.
Why, I don't know why they do that. In case it impacts, in case it impacts something they're doing maybe.
Yeah, it's not required.
Some people think the planning board is in charge of the water supplies sometimes.
Okay. Actually, they can have it any day.
I agree.
Didn't somebody try to make that formal?
Submit the CIP to the planning board, I think it and I can get something from Kerry to confirm, but it's almost like the, I'm gonna say it's similar to the um budget committee, it was, we had always done it. But it wasn't anything we had, we had to, because we have our own board, so it, I think it's if we, if we fell under the, the town council in sense, we didn't have commissioners, we, we we're still a village district, but we went to the council or overseen by the council. But that's not the case. We still do it when we can, we, we didn't get a chance last year or just fell through the cracks, but typically the CIP gets looked at when we do the budget and I've always told um Tim in the past that we'd meet, it's typically February, once the budget gets passed or approved by the board to go to the, to the annual meeting, that's typical with me too, it's generally in February that we, that move the planning board. And we've been moving stuff all around because we're doing projects left and right, so.
Yeah, right.
So we are presenting this tomorrow?
No, we're not.
Okay.
No, I've asked to move it out because I have a prior commitment.
Okay.
Move it in November in the middle of, so someone else can go.
Keith Pratt's been on the pass with me as well, so if you, I can do the same.
There is no um there's only one meeting for the planning board in November. So if you kick it past that, it'll be in December. So I'm assuming you did.
Did you say with on the, did they give us a date already or?
I thought he did, and I thought he told me yesterday that they pushed out to December.
Oh, okay.
I would double check with him, that was just in our pre-meeting, meeting today.
But he hasn't emailed me or anything, did I, well.
So does that give us an opportunity to put the CIP on the agenda for next month? And just spend five minutes just talking about it so everybody's aware of what's on it? Because we haven't really seen it for over a year, right?
The other question is, if you normally do it in February, why do it in December?
Well, it was one of those, I, I, I got the request, I asked Michelle, I didn't think there was gonna be a whole lot being moved around. You put some stuff, sent it off. And it ended up on the agenda for tomorrow, I, tomorrow night, I'm like, and I didn't even request to be there.
So I don't know if it's the planning board that wants to know all, from all of the other people that might be meeting with them to tell them, is it like a timing issue on the planning board's part?
Development more than, more so than the board itself as a department.
But.
But it's all departments in the town, all town departments submit the, their portion of the CIP, I don't know, it's town's one CIP, but.
There's nothing wrong with it.
Is it all submitted all at, at the same time? Is that why they're asking us as well?
It's always.
Because it'd be better if we could, if we could push this off to February when we're gonna be looking at it anyway.
They typically all done their CIP work by then.
Oh, so they wanted ahead of that.
Yeah, and it's typically for us, it's, we don't, our budgets are we're not in line with the town when they're working on a budget, we're a little later than that, so, you know, it's always coincided with our budget.
So I guess on the on the slight chance that there's something that we explain to them that's on our CIP that affects something that the town's doing. That would be good to be there in December, but if there's no chance for that to happen, I don't know how important it is, I don't know.
I, I just question, every time you go, especially if you bring Keith, that's five hundred bucks, right?
At least.
A thousand bucks.
Yeah.
So.
I, I'm sure.
I, I, I just kind of, you know, either we move it to December in general and then it's always in December, right? Or I would move it out to February and then continue doing it in February, but if you say February is too late, then why do it in February, why not do it in December? But then omit the February one.
I don't know if it's too late, it just doesn't coincide with is there any reason you need it before?
I would ask Tim, to be honest with you, I don't have the dates um, in my head for that, but I mean, if he says it, then he would be the one to know.
Other than nothing comes to mind that, that it was, you couldn't do it later, it was, it wasn't with everybody else submitting their their information during their presentation, that was my only
Well, let me see if we can do it when we normally look at it. And if he says that's not helpful to us, then I don't know, we'll figure out if we're gonna bother. But as it stands right now, do we want to just put the CIP on the agenda for next month and at least look at it?
It may not be a bad idea that something Keith can be, be a
Yeah, or
as well.
Yeah, or if we're more up to speed on it, maybe one of us can go to and save Keith.
I mean, it's the agenda for
Oh, for
Yeah, we'll make Keith aware as well.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Part of that.
Yeah, because he, he's definitely unplugged into that type of stuff. Alright. Alright. Good, um, so any questions from the press in public? Do we see anybody um, holding on the line?
Somebody's there.
There's a seven, eight, one number. Want to allow to talk or anything, if you're seven, eight, one? Have anything to say? Going once. Alright. So um, I think the only other one on there is Dave, and if Dave has no comments, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I, I just have one, uh, board members and um, and Ron, I just asked that you guys entertain, um, SCADA integration on the connection with Penn Truck, it's not currently connected, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Ron about it, but I don't know how much money it is, but it would definitely be um, a, a, a big, a big ascent, a, 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 a big help for operations.
That's a great idea, yeah.
It is. Is that the Penn Truck pump station you're talking about?
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
The interconnected.
Uh, so you don't have to spitball it. Yeah, that's a great idea.
So what would you be monitoring? Just basically flow rate and um, get on off flow, be able to turn it on and off remotely, basically, right?
Yeah, that'd be the best.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be the most simple, I mean, ideally, uh, Cadillac would be to adjust the flow, but if that's, you know, that's not, i- if it adds too much, just on off like Ron's saying.
So that's done through controls and not manually with a ball valve or something?
Correct, currently it's done through the, yeah, it's all electronic, that's right.
So that, that should bode better for SCADA than compatibility, it's a good point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, I don't know how many tags it would be, but yeah, yes.
Okay. Good point, Dave. Alright. So I think that's it, uh, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? Paul first, John second. Paul, how do you vote?
How about I?
John?
Hi.
Wolf?
In favor?
And?
In favor.
And I'm in favor, five zero zero.